Yes. Hello, everyone. It is six o'clock. I'd like to call tonight's council meeting to order. I'd like to start by reminding everyone that there are multiple opportunities to speak on items on the agenda. And there is a section for items not on the agenda for anyone wishing to speak at all. If you could please fill out a yellow card and hand it to our city clerk so that we can ascertain how many people want to speak on any one item. And that way, we can make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. I'd also like to mention, if you didn't notice, our flags outside are at half staff. And that is in acknowledgement and remembrance condolences for the victims of yesterday's shooting in Highland Park in Illinois. Okay, so with that, I'd like to call us to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, and this will be led by Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Please, Dornian, saluting. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and remain standing. Is Bill Hopkins here from New Hope? Yes, please, invocation.
I think it'd be fitting that we just pray a prayer of blessing and healing for the community in Illinois, as well as pray for our own community for continued covering of God's presence and protection. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather. And decisions are made here that are crucial to our community. But, God, our heart is definitely broken for the community in Illinois. And we pray just a blessing of your peace and your presence over those affected, who are affected. And we feel the sting here. We pray, God, that you would guide them and direct them through the process of healing. And senseless acts like this are hard to comprehend. But we grieve with those that grieve, and we come alongside them with our heart of compassion and empathy. And we pray for our own community, that you would continue to watch over, protect us and our neighborhoods and families and businesses, God, that would be protected. Father, we thank you for those that watch over us. We thank you for our first responders. God, we pray that as they watch over us, that you would watch over them and keep them safe. And we honor them, and we thank you for them. I honor our mayor and our council tonight as they guide and direct this time. And we pray for the betterment of our own community in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Friday, July 1st at 4:30 PM. Roll call, Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
President.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have none. Under ceremonial items, we have none. That brings us to presentations to the council. This is the time on the agenda where anyone can speak on items not on the agenda. Ty, do you have a number of cards?
At this moment, Madam Mayor, we have two speaker cards. The first one is Stephanie Ellie, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Okay, also, when your item is called, if you could please come and sit in the front row. That way, we can move along. Okay, so Stephanie, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me today. Good evening, Gilroy City council members. My name is Stephanie Ellie, and I would like to ask a council member to please agendize this topic. Animal pollinators are responsible for over three-quarters of the staple crops that feed humankind. That's like saying three out of the four bites we eat rely on pollinators. Recently, four species of bumblebee have been added to the California Endangered Species List. And in fact, all bees, native, feral, and managed, are in a steep decline. The bee population decreased 40% in 2019, another 40% the following year, and another 47% last year. Experts describe this decline as unsustainable for crop pollination and our food supply. Recently, Morgan Hill, Los Angeles, Philadelphia, New York City, Detroit, and several cities in Colorado have reversed their urban beekeeping laws. Many of these laws stem from antiquated and inaccurate understanding of bees. Back in 1879, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Back in 1879, Los Angeles outlawed beekeeping because they incorrectly believed bees attacked and damaged fruit flowers. Urban beekeepers add to those people dedicated to rebuilding bee populations, and this is hopeful for urban bees. And this is hopeful for bees. An unexpected result of urban beekeeping is the other benefits that cities are seeing that are bigger than the humble bee. Urban beekeeping drives the pollinator garden movement, and pollinator gardens use 75% less water than traditional lawns. Pollinator pathways can be developed at a very low cost and provide for native biodiversity, as well as beautify our homes and cities. Reduction of water and return of native plants fits into our draft climate action program. And in this way, bees become a gateway bug, creating spaces for native and migratory pollinators like the at-risk monarch butterfly. Gilroy's agricultural industry, Gilroy Gardens, and our wineries are a few of the economies that benefit since bees will forage for pollen and nectar at distances of six miles or more. Urban beekeeping can bring additional income into Gilroy through agricultural tourism. The $70 billion industry is expected to grow to $117 billion by 2027. And there are already thriving bee-related tours and experiences that you can participate in in our neighboring communities. I would like to ask the council for an opportunity to come before you in the near future to share more in hopes that we may join the fight by standing with our neighboring and our national cities to bring urban beekeeping back to Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. Early on, when this group of elected started, I guess, representing us on the days, the two individuals, city councilpeople, said that they were, at one point or another, would bring up an issue of marijuana back in Gilroy. I don't need to mention their names. We all know who they were. Today, I received a report from a friend of mine, Dr. Stuart Reese. He's a PhD professor in Australia. They just approved his report on the impact of substance abuse-related trends, marijuana, and the impact and the trend on U.S. autism rates. We all know that autism has exploded in this country over the years. This chart shows that 1975, 1 in 5,000 children were estimated to get autism. In 2010, 1 in 11, 110 got autism. In 1975, the percent THC was .74. In 2010, it was 13, and it's even gotten higher today. This study, which I'm going to give to the city clerk to see if any of you would like to read it, basically concludes. Now, the reason why I say this is because those who advocate for marijuana say that the data I just showed you, the chart, shows a correlation, but it doesn't prove causation. Dr. Stuart Reese's report here proves causation. Basically, it says increased cannabis use is one of the principal causes and primary drivers of escalating U.S. autism rates. It's confirmed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude speakers for this section?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have no other speaker cards for 3.1.
Reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Armendaris?
No report.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. The Visit Gilroy received notification from Visit California approval of their $15,000 grant request to add a new experience at our California Welcome Center. This grant will fund a 360-degree video. They'll provide guests with an emergent virtual reality experience of two of the most popular visitor attractions around Gilroy. Gilroy Gardens in Casa de Fruta. Project completion is planned for the end of August. Thirteen California Welcome Center consignment vendors were approved for their annual renewal by the Board of Directors during the June 23rd board meeting. Two new consignment vendors were approved for the board for inclusion at the Welcome Center. Officers from the Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center Board of Directors were approved for fiscal year '22 and '23. Serving as a new chair for the board will be Kurt Michelson. In addition, Eric Gettberg, Tom Klein, Karen Decker, Corinne Decker, and past Chair Big Bonnie will serve as executive leadership for the upcoming fiscal year. Visitors at the Welcome Center continue to be purchasing a significant amount of California logo items. This increase in sales is primarily driven by the return of international visitors to the state and to the region. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, with this upcoming code adoption cycle, all 13 Silicon Valley Clean Energy member cities, member communities, are actively engaging with actions to approve new reach codes for the 2022 Building and Energy Codes. Communities are working with SVCE to conduct public outreach, connect with technical consultation to help develop code language, and add reach codes to upcoming council and board meeting agendas. Reach codes are impactful tools for fighting climate change as they help to set policy changes to allow for building electrification at scale to lower emissions, influence future state building codes, and direct local decarbonization policies. As more cities adopt all electric reach codes, that will naturally increase the cost of natural gas utilities because the infrastructure in place still needs to be maintained. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. I want to begin by congratulating all the city employees who were recognized recently at the June 24th Gilroy Employees Service Awards Barbecue. And thank you to all those who were involved in putting the event together. It was such a wonderful, deserving event for our staff. The Mayor Blankley also joined me at the festivities, and she has agreed to participate in the potato sack race next year, if there's one, so. Oh, you forgot.
Yeah.
Next, and I know the city manager will go into more detail in his report, but I just want to share recently, members of the downtown Gourmet Alley Ad Hoc Committee, along with City Manager Forbes and Mrs. Decker, were invited to participate in the monthly meeting of the Silicon Valley Economic Development Alliance that was hosted in Morgan Hill. I was glad to attend, and also, along with Mr. Forbes and Mrs. Decker, to represent the ad hoc committee. The event brought together the economic development managers and staff from 10 Bay Area cities to discuss best practices for revitalizing their downtown. This month's meeting was hosted by the city of Morgan Hill, who took us on a tour downtown to highlight various projects, new developments, and incentives that the city is working on. So again, I was honored to participate in that, and I know that we'll have a little bit more discussion on that later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
No report this evening.
Okay, and my report's pretty short, too. I want to call just attention to, because I'm the representative to Gilroy Sister Cities, there's someone out there using fraudulent checks that say Gilroy Sister Cities, but it's from an account that's been closed since 2007. So for any vendors out there, our city clerk's been contacted by two so far. And they're going to the police department, but I just want to announce that be careful. Gilroy Sister Cities is not the city of Gilroy, and Gilroy Sister Cities, that account is a, it's a closed account from 2007. So just ask for ID when you're accepting a check. It is next week that we meet with SCRA and Valley Water, so we'll have a report on that next council meeting. All right, council correspondents, we have none. Future council initiated items, do we have any?
Well, I would like to see if the council's interested in putting the urban bee issue on a future agenda item.
Okay, I am not, but there are those who are.
Can I ask a question? Do you want a report, or maybe a report back on sort of?
Well, apparently, we have an ordinance that does not allow it, and I think our speaker would see it changed so that they can have it allowed. So I guess, Jimmy, probably a report so we can discuss it, see if the council is in acceptance of that.
Because you can't allow just one agricultural use. You're bringing agricultural use down to city limits.
I guess that's what Matthew, we can get a report, and if we want further discussion, then we can. I'm in favor of a report.
So it's, okay, is that all right? All right, so a report will come back.
I have one, too, Mayor.
Oh.
Last week, we were all asked by the city clerk if we wanted to attend the League of Cities Annual Conference in September. This training and travel expense last year cost $2,500, attended by Mayor Blankley and Councilmember Tovar. It doesn't require approval at a public meeting because the league is deemed normal per our council norms. I am requesting to place a reimbursement for my training and travel expenses from Civic Wells March 2022 Conference for $1,200, and Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition's annual bike summit coming up for $50, with a possible action to allow me to have the same opportunity for training and education on a future agenda. I'm not looking for any discussion on the merits of my request, but simply following the procedures to request training and education per our norms. I am more than willing and happy to provide a short write-up of the trainings, organizations, and how they not only meet and tie back into our strategic plan and general plan, but tie into several committees and goals that I'm assigned to by the mayor, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Thank you. You're not assigned to things by the mayor, just so you know. The council approves the appointment, yeah, the appointments that we go to. But is there support for that? To me, we've already discussed that, but that's, I will be in no.
I support it.
Okay, there's one. Two, and then, of course, Mr. Hilton, so that's three, so that fails. Okay? Thank you. All right, consent calendar, item seven. Is there any, does anyone want to remove anything from consent? Okay, see, okay, I gotta open public comment first, sorry. Yeah, opening public comment, do we have any comments on?
No, Madam Mayor.
Consent, okay, then closing public comment, and now you, go ahead, Councilmember Bracco, if you'd like to make the motion. Consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, and it's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, item eight, bits and proposals, we have none. Item nine, public hearings. Consideration of the placement of special assessment liens for the non-payment of charges for the collection of garbage, rubbish, and refuse on certain properties located in the city of Gilroy. I need to first ask council members if they have had any ex parte communications to disclose. Anyone? None? Okay, then I will go to Harjo for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council member and fellow community members. Sir Jiltsanga Finance Director with the city of Gilroy Finance Department, and I am for you presenting the public hearing item to place special assessment liens for delinquent garbage collection services for properties located in Gilroy. A little background on this item, it is an annual reoccurring process that's established by the Gilroy City Code, as well as part of the refuse agreement that we have with Recology. The service period covered for this lien process covers from March 2021 through February 2022. And the noticing of the delinquent accounts begins in February by notifying the customer owners, as well as notifying the property owners as well. As part of the Gilroy Code, it requires the Finance Director to conduct an administrative hearing at the staff level to hear any property owners that have any objections to any of the liens. That was conducted in April of this year. And following that hearing, a revised list is produced in May, closer to end of May. The final notice, which outlines the council public hearing information, is remedied out. So the agenda that was published last week included the interim liens list, which had about approximately 200 accounts totaling $63,000. And then, on the day of the public hearing, which is tonight, we typically supplement a revised final list to account for any accounts that may have come current since the agenda was published. So I believe you have a copy on your desk for the updated Exhibit A to the resolution, which has a total number of about 184 accounts totaling $57,000. So the actions we're basically asking for tonight is to conduct the public hearing, as well as adopt the resolution that authorizes the placement of the assessment liens for the properties that are on that exhibit. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions before I open public comment? Okay, I do, Harjo, I just want to understand, because some of these are, we have a total of $57,000 down from $63,000 in just the last few days, so that's great. But is there a minimum threshold before they get on this list, before we propose liens? Because some of these look like they're just one month's garbage bill.
Right, so the code doesn't dictate there to be a threshold, so by code, we do include all of them. But I know Recology does call everyone that is under a certain threshold. I want to say that's established under $200 to give them an opportunity to come current. And I think it's through that active outreach that we're able to drop down some numbers.
Okay, but since, if it is only one month's worth, then that means they're only one month late?
It may be, well.
Or that they missed a month from?
It's for that period, right.
Okay, I'm trying to understand. These are not people that are getting put on this list just because they missed a single month. It's because they've missed a month back, and we've had many, many months to correct it.
That's correct, so.
Before this happens.
Right, so this only covers through February 2022, right? So this was the amount for that period. They could be still past due for March onwards as well, so their actual account balance could be much higher. But they won't be covered until the next period of the liens.
Right, no, I understand. The total is big, yeah, it's a lot of, it's a lot. Okay, so if there are no more questions, if I was the only one, then I would like to open the public hearing, and it is 6:21. Do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing the public hearing at 6:21. And looking for possible action, wanting to point out to everybody, though, that the list that we have in front of us is the one that's going to be part of the record, not what's in the packet, not what went out in the packet, okay?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution imposing the special assessment liens.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by council, so motion made by Councilmember Leroy Munoz and seconded by Councilmember Marks. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris? Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to 9.2, adopt a resolution updating the citywide user fee schedule. And again, I am first looking for any ex parte communications that may need to be disclosed. Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Um, Harjo, go ahead.
Yeah, and before you, is a public hearing to adopt a resolution updating the citywide user fee schedule. Background on this item, the city's current fee schedule was updated, adopted in 2014. It does not include any inflationary adjustments. So as part of our current biannual budget, budget, as well as the work plan, we included the completion of that study. Back in May 2022, we came before you to present an update on the project. The initial study was released on June 1st, followed by two community meetings. And on June 20th, we came before the council to present the findings of the study and as well as introduce a ordinance for related amendments to include inflationary adjustments and so forth. So that's the background on that. And tonight's actions are basically where, is the last step, if you will, in that process, is to conduct the public hearing and adopt a resolution updating the citywide user fee schedule. So the new schedule will become effective August 1st, which is a few weeks away. And following the adoption tonight, you know, we'll go ahead and communicate, as well as post-signage at the customer service counters, notifying our users of the upcoming change. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Councilmember Bracco? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, okay.
So we haven't updated this in eight years?
Yes, so the last adjustment was in 2014.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Marks?
Thank you for your report. I have one question. Did you ever, no, I don't want to say it like that. Is, are these user fees compared to the surrounding cities, these new ones?
So as part of the study scope, it was not included to study other cities. You know, for, there's a couple reasons why we made, because each city operates differently. So I think it won't necessarily be comparing apples to apples, if you will. I think it would have involved probably a much extensive effort, if you will, to conduct that kind of analysis. But I don't think we'll still have that level of surety to say that we're comparing apples to apples.
I guess I was just concerned because business license fees really jumped. And I'm really concerned with the impending recession, and we want to have new businesses in Gilroy. Is this going to impede them from coming if they can go to a nearby city, such as Morgan Hill or Hollister, cheaper?
So if I may ask a clarifying question, you're talking about the processing fees, or is that the business license tax in itself? Because the tax does not change. It's rather the processing fees, if you will, to review the license. And what the study found was, it is an extensive process that, for those departments that are involved, to review a license, as well as conduct the related inspections, especially, you know, when it involves our fire teammates, and we were just not recovering the costs.
I was looking at the one that went from $130 to $279. Is that $279 unlimited hours, or is that per hour? And for those of you who might be wondering why I didn't bring this up two weeks ago, I was homesick with COVID, so.
Sorry, could you provide me the reference again for?
Well, in my packet, it was page 95. It's called Business License. It was $130 an hour. Then the new fee is $279, but I'm not sure if that's unlimited hours or if that's per hour. It just had $279 as the new fee.
Harjo, we can come back to that question if you want, since I do my best to get counsel to give them in advance so that you're prepared to, you know, that way the public can hear it, but we're not all waiting for someone to find an answer that they didn't know was coming. Okay, so we'll pause on that one, and we'll go to Councilmember Armendaris.
Thank you, and thank you for the report, Harjo, and your work on this. My concern is with recreation services, in particular rental fees for parks. I see that. I see that La Sanimas and San Ysidro have some new fees and a number of increased fees at La Sanimas Park. But more astounding to me are the new fees at San Ysidro Park. And I want to, I want us to look at this through an lens of equity, given that San Ysidro Park and the rest of the east side of Gilroy, east of Church Street, has less than one-tenth the amount of park acreage than the rest of our community. And so if we're taking that into consideration and we want to impose fees on something that's already in tremendous demand because of the limited amount of park acreage and recreational facilities and stuff, I'd like us to reconsider that because it's not fair to the community and it's not an equitable way to distribute costs on part of the community that's really deprived already of parkland and recreation opportunities.
Sure. So we did, we did take that into account, and I think the approach that's taken for the recreation, you know, parking facility fees is consistent with the current practice that we have, which is the fees are discounted based on who the users are. So category D, A through D is where, you know, we assess the fees on category D being the 100% full cost recovery, and those are for non-residents or businesses. And city of Gilroy residents and nonprofits pay a lesser fee already, so they're not paying the full 100% cost recovery. So that's consistent throughout the schedule for parks and facilities.
Thank you, I see that. But I'm wondering, since these are new fees on areas of the park that historically we've used for free, how, how do we justify that? I understand it's subsidized in other ways and other facilities are subsidized, but we are entering a recession, right? We have just come out of a period when people had nothing else but our free parks, and so I'd like us to reconsider that.
I think that'd be up to the council to give, you know, a different direction for any respective fees, but I think, again, I think the ordinance as well as the code kind of outlines the approach that we have taken, and that's what staff has applied and recommended as well.
Right.
And then the new fees essentially were, you know, we're getting a reservation request, so there is staff time and effort involved, so we wouldn't be recovering those costs.
Right, this isn't just to be in the park. This is to use it for a particular purpose and reserve it, and the mechanism is already in there for those who can't afford to pay less. Jimmy wanted to comment?
I would just add to that, Mr. Armadarez, that the practice of creating the user fee studies, in its essence, only a mathematical calculation. Council and various other activities have at times modified the cost recovery percentage, but what we're presenting to you is the 100% cost recovery. So if council had a policy or direction to modify that, they could do that on a fee-by-fee basis, but the study itself only takes into consideration math.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I'll say on that, too, is the study we did, the consultant that we hired, was it 2019, to do the study for us, recommended that we always show the 100% cost recovery so that we know what the cost is, and then from there you can discount it, so you're aware of what it is. If you never show the whole, then you don't know what you're discounting. So that was a recommendation by that consultant. Okay, do we need to go back to Councilmember Marks?
I found it, page 94. It is... It is, it's called Business License Regulatory Review Fire Inspections. And I get, and my question again is, it was $130 per hour, and then it says 279. I just want to know, is that multiple hours or is that 279 per hour?
I suppose if we still can't find it, we can answer it later.
All right, I got it. Sorry about that.
Okay.
It's under fire fee, so I was looking in finance. So the business license regulatory fee is, it went from $130 to 279, and that includes two hours.
Two hours, okay, great, thank you. You know, I guess since we had two community meetings and no one complained, I just hope they realize that all of this is taking place and, you know, there has been an increase, but I guess that should be on the public to pay attention to what's going on. So, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go to the public and open the public hearing at 6:32 and ask if we have any speakers.
I have no speaker cards for this item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing at 6:32. And looking for possible action to adopt, it would be a motion to adopt a resolution updating the citywide user fee schedule based on the 2022 comprehensive user fee study.
Still move, Madam Mayor.
Okay, motion by Councilmember LaRoma Yost. I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
No.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Aliremo Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blenkley.
Yes. Okay, unfinished business, item 10, 10.1, Appointments to City Boards, Commissions, and Committees with Open Vacancies. There is no staff presentation here. This is, we had two applicants for open government commission. We had one of those applicants come to our last meeting to interview. That was Jessica Irwin. And so I'm going to open public comment before going to council. So I'd like to open public comment. Ty?
I receive no public comments on this item, Madam Mayor.
No, okay, then I'm closing public comment. And I'm going to go down and ask who you're voting for. I'm going to start to my right, Councilmember Bracco. Okay, Councilmember Armadarez.
Jessica.
Councilmember Marks.
Jessica.
Councilmember Hilton.
Not voting.
Council, Councilmember Tovar.
Ms. Irwin, Jessica Irwin.
Okay, and Councilmember LaRoma Yost.
And also Jessica Irwin.
Okay, and I'm with Jessica too, so that's six for Jessica. Congratulations. If she's here, oh, she is here. Okay, great. All right, so, oh wait, we need a motion. Do I need to actually have a motion or just do the voting that I just did?
Your voting is fine, thank you.
Okay, and that's, the term is ending December 31, 2025. Okay, 10.2, Report on Services for Unhoused Individuals and Enforcement of No Camping Ordinances. Jimmy is going to give us the staff report and also Andy and also Police Chief, in whatever order. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a report back from a council-initiated item concerning the possibilities and the legal tools that the city has for enforcement of no camping ordinances and services for the unhoused individuals. As you'll hear tonight, it is not a simple matter. I think, I think our police department does a really good job of trying to work with folks and try to assist them, but there are instances where that, that just isn't enough. And so I appreciate the work that our police chief and city attorney have done in giving you an overview of what is possible. I will, you know, I will tell you that what is, what is possible legally is, does come with consequences, and it also comes with unintended consequences at times. And I think that's very important for us as staff to make you aware of those before you consider as a policy group what you expect from your city staff when it comes to enforcement of those, those ordinances. So with that, I'll turn it over to the police chief to give you an introduction about what the police department's currently doing as it pertains to this topic. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council and members of the public, before we get into really the interpretation of Martin v. Boise and what the Ninth Circuit decided on that case and how other cities are actually working to adjust their practices, I kind of want to walk you through the anatomy of a complaint so that members of the community understand what it is that our quality of life officers are currently doing, which we believe is kind of a best practice, comprehensive approach. And I do have one of the member, the team members here with the supervisor, in the event that the public may have questions that I, I'm unable to answer, and since they're, they're out there on a daily basis, they may be a little bit more versed on that. So our quality of life officers will respond at the location and make contact with unhoused folks and individuals. They'll obtain their information and ask if they are receiving services from any local or county provider. If they are currently or have received services, the officers will inquire as to what services were provided, how it's working for them, and if there's any need for further assistance in that area. If the unhoused individual has not gone through the screening evaluation process and has not received services, but they would like to, the officers will contact one of the local or county service providers that they have built a partnership with and have them respond at the location to make contact with the unhoused individual. And sometimes the provider will respond immediately, and other times they are provided with a, with a name and their location, and the provider will respond at the earliest convenience. They will also offer to connect unhoused individual with local shelter, which is a National Guard armory here in town. And the officers will then address the complaint with the individuals and try to get voluntary compliance to seize the activity or behavior that is among other possibilities illegal, unsanitary, unsafe, concerning, or infringing on the quality of life of other community members. Some situations require for officers to ask the unhoused individual to leave the current location in order to resolve the problem. An example of that is setting up camp at a picnic, picnic party area of a park, denying community members the ability to host a party, or having an overgrown encampment with debris, garbage, and waste blocking the sidewalks on private property, et cetera. Again, the goal is to try to get voluntary compliance. If the unhoused individual refuses all assistance or refuses to voluntarily comply with the officers, and then we're currently not displacing them, from our experience, the problems often continue. And so the quality of life officers, part of their onboarding, they visited other municipalities and spoke with other officers with current deployment plans. And what they found out is that other agencies who have officers assigned to similar units like our quality of life officers, like us, are initially emphasizing connecting the unhoused individuals with resources instead of immediate enforcement, enforcement or arresting. The difference we, we have discovered is when voluntary compliance is not obtained, other cities are still conducting enforcement and clearups and cleanups of encampments when the problem continues. Unless there's an emergency, these clearups and cleanups occur after they are clear postings of at least 72-hour warnings to vacate those locations. Items that met the agency's criteria for storing or kept for 90 days to be claimed, and then items were determined to be, that were determined to be refused, soiled, hazmat, or unsanitary were disposed. And so we did have Ellen Taylor from the city attorney's office get ahold of other city attorneys and kind of ask and do a survey at the interpretation, how they interpretation this case law and work in around that. So I would have our city attorney kind of cover a little bit on, on that result, on those results, that information.
All right, let me speak a little bit about the legal framework that we're really involved in here, because the, in addition to the problem of homelessness, part of the problem of dealing with arises from a very particular court case called Martin versus the City of Boise, Idaho, which came out from the Ninth Circuit Federal Court of Appeal in 2019. And that case sent shockwaves through public agencies because it essentially said that you cannot enforce a no camping in public property ordinance against homeless people who have no place else to go, in essence. The argument was that it actually would violate the Eighth Amendment to do that. Now, we don't hear about the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution very much, but the Eighth Amendment bars cruel and unusual punishment. This has been thought generally to refer to things like excessive punishments for minor crimes and so on. However, it has also been used by the Supreme Court to prevent the outlawing of status crimes. In other words, the argument would be, if you're not allowing someone to camp, i.e. to sleep outside in your area, then you are criminalizing the basic conduct of being homeless and not having any place else to sleep. That's the argument of the case. That could be extended to various other kinds of policies as well, including drinking and eating and littering and many other things. But nonetheless, that's the general concept that public agencies are not allowed to criminalize the status of an unfortunate individual who, in some sense, doesn't have a choice. So what Boise, what the Boise case specifically did is it dealt with prevention of enforcing the no camping in a public park or on public property ordinances. The case has some expansive language that almost implied that a city has to solve its homeless problem before it can do any such enforcement. However, it also has some limiting language in footnotes that allow it to be used in a more moderate way. Some cities have interpreted Boise to mean that essentially you can't restrict camping or hanging out in other respects in public property unless you have shelter space for every single homeless person in your city, which might be, might be hundreds of people. Other cities have interpreted it differently, however, and there are court cases now that essentially say that a city can enforce a no camping in public property ordinance, for example, as against a small number of people. Let's say there are two or three people camping in public in a park. Those people can be removed by the city, ordered to vacate, provided the city does it in a certain way. And the most interesting case is probably one from Oakland that came out a little while ago. And let me just read to you what it said that illustrates that. The district court, this is a federal case, and this is in the staff report, if anybody wants to get deeper into the legalities of this. The court held it would not violate the holding of Boise for the city of Oakland to clean and clear the park, which means to remove an encampment, as long as it followed protocol. And the protocol included proving a notice of, providing a notice to vacate at least 72 hours in advance, offering shelter beds to the encampment, to the encampment residents, and providing notice and storage for any property that was collected during the clean and clear, and otherwise adhering to various cities' written policies and presentations that they had made to the court. And this primarily includes providing adequate shelter beds, it includes providing notice, it includes allowing people to keep their personal property, not destroying personal property. In fact, the city's required to store it for 90 days if the city removes property, and so on. So I, that seems to represent the state of the law now. Now, it's not as simple as, not that that's simple, but there are complications. For example, at city attorney's conferences, we talk about what other cities are doing. That's partly where the list that's attached to the staff report came from. And there can be all kinds of issues with providing shelter beds. You have to make sure they're really available. You have to make sure that there's not an onerous signup process. Sometimes homeless people need a dog or a service animal. Sometimes other homeless people are allergic to that dog or service animal. We heard instances of various people who needed, for mental health reasons, to be sheltered along with their street family, or not, or not with certain people. So there can be a lot of complications, and I don't want to imply that this is a simple process at all. But it appears that under the law, if, for example, Gilroy desires to clear, to enforce a no camping ordinance by preventing one or more individuals from, say, camping in a given public park, we can do that if we provide adequate shelter, if it's available, and if it's available to the person, and if we follow a protocol, and the police have developed a suitable protocol that I think would pass muster. So that appears to be the limits of what we can do at this point. Be happy to answer any questions on that, and there's more information in the staff report for anybody that wants to read it.
Okay, I have a clarifying question for Andy. Peter, if yours is, go ahead and go. Okay. Andy, the case that you, the Boise case refers to sleeping, sitting, or lying, right? That's what it refers to, is that you can't criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying, lying, okay, in public areas. So my question, what I want everybody to hear is, where then are, what happens when there is a criminal behavior going on, like starting a fire, like using drugs in public or public... Like, uh, starting a fire, like, um, using drugs in public or public drunkenness, those sorts of things. Can you make, can you explain to us the distinction between someone who's just camping, because they have no place else to sleep or lie, versus someone who is engaging in activities that bring harm or concern to, to the neighbors?
Sure. And, and sometimes there's a clear distinction, sometimes there isn't. For example, the city always has the ability to enforce drug laws, to enforce various kinds of laws against unsafe behavior, like perhaps having an open fire in an unregulated area. We've always had that ability. We have the ability in the Boise case to do that. Sometimes these things are very unclear. For example, I think it's Santa Monica that tried for three years to enforce an ordinance against basically sleeping on park benches because people were camping out on benches in a park. And every time they tried to define what it meant to be sleeping in the wrong way on a park bench in terms of the, the person's posture, the time of day, the blankets, whatever, they got sued on it. And every time, their definition was held to be too vague and impossible. So what I'm answering is that there are many kinds of very specific activities that have always been able to be regulated. However, we then run into the problem as well that if someone is arrested for drinking in public, for an open container, for this or that, do they show up in court? If not, do we issue a bench warrant? The judges really don't want to run homeless people through a criminal process that doesn't really solve a problem, a social problem at all. So there, there, there's sort of that, there's that end even if we do in fact have a clear-cut violation of law. It's not always easily remediable, and I think, uh, the chief can testify to that.
Yes, if there is criminal behavior, then you're addressing the action, like you would in any other incident.
And so that we would do. That's, that falls outside of it, like what the school district, when they are calling us all the time. And we need to respond because they feel the kids are in danger. Okay, Councilmember LaRumeneos.
Andy, I, I can appreciate the potential multiple interpretations that come with offering a, you know, a space. And, and, and just to try to refine that in my own mind, you know, is, is the offer really a guarantee? And so is that something where our officers or, or whomever is out there, code enforcement officers, would they have to know what the number of spaces is on a given night? So for example, if there are fifty spaces available on a given night in, you know, a, a shelter, are they able to enforce this to fifty people, and then the minute you get to fifty-one, the fifty-first, you know, you can't make that offer anymore because they can't guarantee it? So is, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, does an offer have to be a guarantee?
An offer has to be based on actual facts, so it, it probably, to answer your question in a black and white terms, yes. However, it, it has to offer shelter consistent with the rules of the shelter. It may be more than a night. For example, the shelter space has to be available. If you'll notice, when we talked to some other cities, Healdsburg, City of Healdsburg says that they have an employee who does nothing except verify shelter space. That's his job. Because on a given night, if you're telling someone they can't camp in a park, you do have to be able to say to that person, here's where you can go.
And, and again, just to dig just a little, a little bit more into that, does it have to be a, a shelter, again, within, within Gilroy, or does it, can it be in the surrounding region? What are the, what are the limits of, of that offer?
I, I believe the limit is it has to be reasonably available to the person, and, which probably would mean if it's a shelter somewhere, some distance, we would have to say how the person can get there. I mean, I, I think the key that the case emphasizes is, is it has to be practically available to the person and usable. If the person refuses it, which can happen too, that's okay. But the shelter has to, I mean, I guess the bottom line is if we got into litigation, we would have to convince a judge that this was a good faith effort, this shelter really is available, it would work. They would take this person with whatever, uh, additional requirements that person might reasonably have. And then, and then that would be acceptable. So it's not a simple thing at all.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I will just comment, I will share, since I attend, um, I was attending a lot more than I have recently, but the Caltrans District Four meetings, they meet every other Thursday, and it's all, it's on Zoom. And what I've learned there is highway patrol officers will escort people to, who are willing to go. That the problem is that often what, what they have experienced, what they've shared at these meetings is people aren't willing to go because the shelters do have rules and, and, and some people don't want the rules. But, um, when there is a shelter available, they will escort, they will drive them there. So I don't know, it's in the county, I know that, or it's in District Four, I guess I should say, Caltrans District Four, but they are taken there. Okay.
There, if I may, oh.
Yo, is it, is it okay if he adds, or would you, okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Armadere's.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for, for Andy, um, and then a couple for the chief, if I may. So Andy, could you speak more to the definition of encampments versus, uh, what's been found in sit-ly laws?
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by the question.
So what's a definition of an encampment? As recognized by Boise and, or other, other precedent-setting laws?
The cases don't really define encampments, so is there some question about what? I, I, I think, I think the way they use it is for a semi-permanent situation where people have tents and shelters erected and, you know, they have a fair amount of personal property. That's how I've seen it used. I'm not sure if there is an official definition.
Okay, because it's referred to a number of times, right, in this, um, report? So I'd like to know, um, what the definition would be, and who would hold that definition, who would make that definition?
Okay, well, you know, that's, you're right, we do refer to it because it is used in the cases, but I've never seen it actually defined. But I, as I said, I, I believe the, the working definition is that it is a kind of semi-permanent, multiple person, kind of tent city, if you will. But I don't have a better definition than that, and I have not seen one in the cases. It just hasn't come up as to what the exact issue is.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, for chief, um, I've noticed here that, um, there's reference to encampments in various parks in the city and that this was brought up because, um, it says there's residents reporting issues with the parks and there being encampments there. So I, I go out, um, three to four times a week and, and serve food to folks, uh, living on the street, unhoused residents. And, um, I go to San Sejo Park, I've been to Christmas Hill, and I don't see these encampments. Could you be specific as to where they are? Because I see people sleeping during the day. I see people hanging out at the different parks and stuff, Los Animas and Miller as well. But I don't see encampments that, that would be, um, per the definition that Andy just stated.
You know, I think the, the perfect example would be the last, uh, call we dealt with, well, actually, it, it took a couple of days to try to mitigate and try to come up with the best solution for everyone involved, the residents. We, I mean, we received multiple calls there. We ended up going, we, we, the last day, we, we, we spent, uh, five hours there trying to figure out a way so we could help these folks out. But there were, there were obviously a bit out of the car, and most of the property stored about the, the park. And, um, you know, some of the residents there had seen them sleeping there, um, and so.
In the car or in, I can't hear you very well, I'm sorry.
The car parked in the park, and so both, you know, in the park and in the car as well. Through, I mean, for, for a few days. And so, um, you know, that's the latest example that, uh, we, we went out there to try to mitigate that.
But no, like, temporary shelters built there in our parks?
No, no, it's, it's mainly, uh, there are some folks that set up tents, uh, routinely, and, uh, there are some folks that do it overnight. And, uh, they're, they're, they try to be up early, so they take their tent down and, but yeah, there, there are some folks that shoot up, set up tents during the nighttime at Los Animas.
At Los Animas? Okay. And then my last question, if I could. Are you familiar with the current practice that, uh, Valley Water is using on their properties?
As far as cleanups?
As, as far as cleanups or sweeps? With what they're allowing folks to have?
I, I don't know what they're allowing them to have. You mean, as far as what they're picking up and taking, uh, I, I don't know what they're.
Yeah. So the, um, the folks along the, um, creek near my house are, are being allowed, uh, twelve by twelve space. The only thing that Valley Water is doing is, um, taking out the refuse, taking out the garbage. Yeah, but folks are le, left alone, their personal belongings are left alone, and they're allowed to decide what is considered, um, abandoned property and what they still have for their personal use. So I know Valley Water was out there today doing that, but they're, but that seems like a, a very manageable way to handle the situation.
Yeah, that, that had been the practice, uh, right after COVID, where we were doing, uh, cleanups around, uh, the, the setup encampments were, there was soil, what appeared to be refuse or garbage, and that would be collected, and then everything else was, was left there as well.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if I can ask, um, Councilmember Armadere's a follow-up question to her last comment. When you say what Valley Water is allowing, that's because of COVID, because before COVID, they weren't allowing that, right? Now, it's changed because of COVID, correct?
I know COVID restrictions have been lifted, but they're still following that as a best practice.
Right, but that, yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure if that's something that's set in stone or is it still under the sort of COVID guidelines that they've established?
I'd like to ask that we ask that question of Valley Water, right? Because otherwise, I, I know.
I just want to make sure, because when we make, when we make comments, I want to make sure that we're.
I, I do, I understand, and I know that I've heard things here on the dais, and then I've asked John Varela about it, and he says that is not at all the case, and so since he's not here, we don't have Valley Water. Let's just not discuss Valley Water, since that's not our jurisdiction.
I ask that question because I want to make sure we're, we're all giving the most accurate information or statements. Um, we should ask Valley Water.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief, so, um, when we hear about homeless encampments, we, we think a lot of people. But the definition of a homeless encampment is one or more person, right? So I mean, it could be one individual that can be considered a, uh, an encampment. And, um, for me, I mean, I go around the city every day, every morning, I run around the city, and I called the city manager this morning. There is a homeless individual at one of our parks who was, uh, probably scared and endangering a lot of folks. And their stuff is all over, and I think they were, uh, smoking something. So I mean, to me, that was dangerous for everyone around there. So I mean, you know, and I understand the concern, but we also have to be concerned of how our residents are feeling because I understand the parks are for everybody, but we should make them safe. So I just share that information because again, and when we talk about homeless encampments, we're not talking about ten, twenty, thirty people. It can be one or more individuals. So I just want to know that we understand that definition. When we talk about available, available beds, here in Gilroy, do we know if the beds that are being utilized, are they all Gilroy residents? I, I, I don't, I'm not expecting, no, I'm just wondering, because as you know, over the years, we've heard where other cities are busing or sending homeless folks to Gilroy, because, you know, we have maybe more resources than they do. I'm just curious if the beds that we do have available are, wherever we may end up sending them, if they're all Gilroy residents. It'd be good to find that out, because, you know, it's, it's not helping our homeless population if they're coming from other cities, you know?
Yeah, I could tell you that folks at the shelter, they're not all from Gilroy.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's an issue as well, because I mean, obviously, we should, we should be catering to our, our Gilroy residents first, everybody in general, but just our Gilroy residents. Going back to a comment that was made, I think the mayor made it, and it was interesting. Um, you had mentioned that the, um, sheriffs will transport individuals to local shelters, right?
Highway Patrol. Caltrans said that highway patrol officers would transport.
Now, um, and I think it's within Santa Clara County that they do that, right? Because if, if.
I assume.
I'm just wondering if we, if we've ever done anything like that here, where, you know, we assist an individual that may need to go to a homeless shelter and can't get there via bus for, you know, funding reasons? If we, if we have any, anything incentives to help them sort of, um, get there? Because I, obviously, we'd rather them be in a bed somewhere than to be out in the cold summer. So I don't know, Jimmy, I don't know, or Chief, if we have anything like that in place now?
You know, whenever we have the capacity available, we'll do whatever we possibly can to help folks out. And so if it means, you know, sending a C S O or, or a multi-service officer to take someone up to the shelter in sunny availability, we'll do that. Uh, you know, again, if we have the capacity.
Right.
Sometimes we're running short, and then we just can't afford to lose, lose a body.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to the public before we go back to council again. Oh, I thought it was done. He did speak. Well, he did, sorry, he did at the beginning.
Yeah, I just had a question on Councilmember Tovar's statement. If I could, yeah, I, we remember correctly, the previous chief gave us statistics on, um, the unhoused residents in our community, and over sixty-five percent of them are, uh, Gilroyans by definition, if you want to. And the rule that he used to define that is people who've been in Gilroy over ten years. And so the previous chief gave us that information. And the folks in our community, whether they've been here ten minutes or, uh, ten generations, they're, they're residents of our community, and none of us are, are gauged by that rule, and I don't think we should unfairly discriminate against them. The other thing is that, um, the amount of bed space, um, and the, the waitlist for bed space is months long. Like, if, I'm sure our quality of life officers have, have experienced this already, trying to get folks into some of these shelter beds. But you cannot call in June and get placed in a bed until August or September. And they don't care where you're from or where, or your parents are from. There is no, uh, priority given to any particular person of any particular city.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Rocco, since you have not spoken yet, go ahead, and then I would like to get to the public.
Chief, talking about that vehicle that was at Miller Park. Neighbors took pictures of, um, smoking meth. The vehicle's parked on the lawn with junk strewn all over, vehicle's not registered. So why does it take so long to do something? It's obvious we could tow the car away, we could do something about the drug use. Why, why don't we, we, uh, approach it like that?
Well, I could tell you that we ended up taking a criminal case. And sometimes, uh, there are minor infractions, sometimes there are misdemeanors, that you don't necessarily take people into custody. And so I know there were some mechanical issues with the vehicle, and then we got some local service provider to come up with some gas money. So again, it was a collaborative, and so, but the criminal end of it was addressed. And so that case is up with the district attorney's office. And so it was a little bit, uh, a little bit more facts that, uh, that were involved. And yes, uh, if it's, if there's a criminal behavior, then, uh, you know, again, we, we have a collaborative approach, but at the end of the day, we're the police department, so we're going to address it. And so if, if they're committing crime, if they're using dope, if there's, uh, obvious, we show there, and there's evidence, then we'll deal with that. Uh, but I know that, that, that particular case, uh, the approach was to try to get them out of there and address those crimes. Again, that most of those crimes, we can't physically take someone into custody, they have to be cited out. So that's the way they dealt with that eventually.
On, on Los Animas, where all the motorhomes are parked? I know there's been problems over there, and the, the property owner's really upset. Are we doing anything out there?
We've been, that's been a project for the Quality of Life team for a couple of weeks now, and they, uh, they helped someone get out of there. We did, I did go out with Sergeant Tony, and we met with the complainant out there and kind of gave him a game plan. Um, and so that's been a project, and they're still, uh, on a everyday basis, trying to, trying to mitigate that too. Yeah, and, and, I mean, there, I, I did see the sidewalk full of bike parts. Um, and, and there is a lot of garbage out there, and, you know, you talk about the encroachment on, on public access and, but again, uh, we're trying to take the approach of, let's, let's look at a long-term solution here and, and work with both, both fancy complainants and then the folks that were out there as well. Uh, but there are some, you know, again, there are some folks that, uh, that could be aggressive, and then, you know, certainly we'll deal with that too.
Okay, and Andy or Jimmy? That's all right. I, I, I'm good for now.
Okay, um, Councilmember Marks, had you not spoken yet? Okay, go ahead.
Chief, is that true about the armory having a month's long waitlist?
I don't know if they have a month's waitlist. I know that we, one of our quality of life officers had been in contact with, with the, with the shelter and try to, try to figure out a way where, uh, uh, available bed space, uh, would be made. And yeah, that would have to be real-time checking, you know, what, you call in over there, uh, is there a bed available? Uh, this is what we have, and so, um, that has to be on the go. So it wouldn't be, you know, information from two, three days ago, because then.
All right, because I was told that the Miller Park incident, they had two beds available, but the people were not, they were high on drugs, and, and the armory would not accept them. So to me, that was, you know, they had beds available, but people did not qualify. But anyway. But anyway.
And I don't know that information whether or not they were under the influence and I hate to speculate, so I'm not going to comment on that, but if that's third-party information, then...
Yeah, I just don't want, you know, a picture painted that no one can get into the armory because it's a long wait when there are some beds available.
Well, that's the whole idea about the approach is to create those partnerships to make sure that if that's the case, we're calling over there real time and figuring out if there's some bed space.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, Ty, how many cards do you have for people who want to speak?
I have 11 speakers. Yes, it's TJ.
Okay, so TJ should be at the podium?
Yeah. Sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've been homeless for almost 10 years and I have been through the system that you call for the homeless in San Jose for 11 months. They kicked me out because I couldn't put in five applications in one week. Now each one of those applications is anywhere between $25 to $50 per application. And I work for a living, I have the same job I've had for 19 years. It'll be 20 years in September. I'm an instructional associate, special ed, and not everyone out there is a drug addict or an alcoholic. I'm one of them and I'm proud to not do it. I've got 41 years clean and sober and I don't have a problem disclosing my sobriety and my... If I can tell grand jury, I can tell you guys. Okay? But if I end up losing this tent, where am I going to go? What's the situation going to end up happening? Am I going to end up being out in San Jose and end up losing my job? Because I can't make it, because I can't have a place to sleep and worry about my back? I want housing, both me and my boyfriend want housing, but we fall through the cracks at Santa Clara County Compassion Center. I've been through all of this for nine years. Something is broken and something needs to be fixed. I'm tired of being on the streets. Now, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't want to be there anymore. And I bet you a lot of them don't want to be there either. But they don't know how. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Conrelto, followed by Gregory Blum, followed by Michael Morris, followed by Joseph Robinson.
Thank you, Council. And Mayor, and then?
Yes.
Real quickly, I own the property, you probably know, is the old Orchard Supply Store and now Greg is renting, we'll be speaking next. For the last number of years, we've had a number of people, if you've been by the backside on Ninth Street. And I can appreciate there is a few people that need help out there. I don't want to use our officers, like I've called before, for you to come out there and move people around. They move them, people that have trailers or a chance for that, they're back in a couple of weeks. And, you know, as a businessman, I'll tell you what, I never did anything in business that didn't take me further to getting an answer. I wouldn't keep losing money. You can go behind there right now, we have a person that I think selling drugs, because when someone shows up at eight in the morning and leaves at five in the afternoon and every bicycle stops at his car, everybody walking by, I'd say he's selling drugs. And he takes the weekends off, so pretty much like a job. I've talked to a number of those people. Some of them would just say, hey, I'm an alcoholic, I can't, there's a lot of good people out there. Rebecca, I appreciate you bringing meals, but in the most, a lot of them, we're picking up that trash after you're done. It's a shame. We need to put these people in an encampment where they can be protected and our police officers don't have to do it over and over and over again. You guys want to save people. I don't want you to waste the time on someone right there that it's just, you move them out and they're back in a couple of weeks. You can find needles, so we know we got drugs, we got needles all over that, they use all the bushes behind there for their bathroom. These are things, Greg's going to speak, he's had, we've had windows broken, we've had... And it's just, you're putting it off, we're not getting anything done. So I think if we did an encampment where they can be protected and somebody could talk to them and filter out the ones that really want to get out and do it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, as we're trying to be, please, civil, please, no shouting out from the audience, okay? We're all trying to listen to each other, so please be respectful of the person who's speaking's time and let us just get through everybody who wants to talk, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm the owner and general manager of Gilroy Motorcycle Center. Six months ago, we moved into the old Orchard Supply building, like Mike said. Great location, business is growing, thriving, which we love. However, the neighbors we have in the back causing a little bit of trouble for us. Want to mimic what Mike said, there are a lot of guys back there that are really good people and there are some people that need a lot more help. We found needles, we found human feces, we found fires that they tried to start. We've called the cops far too many times. I have nothing but great things to say about the Gilroy Police Department, they've done an uptight job. Just recently, there was a camper that went up in flames just last week. Thank goodness it was on the other side of the street, but it was one of those things that the fire hazard that is back there is getting pretty bad. Just the beginning of June, they broke our window, threw a rock through our window, they harassed myself, my staff and some customers. And I know it's a sensitive topic and I have no intention to displace anybody, but they need some more help. And if we have laws that we can enforce, why not find a way to enforce them compassionately? Thank you.
Thank you, all right, next speaker.
Michael Morris, followed by Joseph Robinson, followed by Lizanne Davy, followed by Marty Estrada.
Okay, if you heard your name, if you please come up to the front row, okay?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Michael Morris. Our community had enough of what we see happening with homelessness in Gilroy. We had enough of seeing poor people living in filth, rotting down our streets. Where is the compassion? We had enough of the open-air drug market, bike shop shops and other crime happening in the encampments in our neighborhoods. We had enough of the organizations and activists misleading people by saying homelessness is a housing problem or safe parking problem. We had enough. Data shows that the primary cause of homelessness is a mental illness and addiction. So we are asking you to remove the encampments and do three reasonable things. One, help the homeless who need help to get back on their feet. Where's that lady? Second, arrest the criminal elements in the encampments and put them in jail. Enough is enough. Three, put the mentally ill and addict homeless into rehab facilities and shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, next speaker.
Joseph Robinson.
I think the thing that was shocking about the Boise decision was that it asked for a modicum of compassion. And so I see everybody trying to flex their one compassion muscles and I actually do appreciate that. It's good to see you on your best behavior. But I noticed that everybody's looking for ways to get around that compassion and find some way of just getting sick of it and doing something, whatever. Somebody's going to do the dirty work and then we'll all feel better. But people are tired of this argument, I guess, but I would just say that everybody knows and it's long been known that you have to put homeless people in a house and then you deliver services to them. And that's, and so, and it would save you all of this legalese and this pretend concern. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Lizanne Davy.
Followed by...
Marty Estrada, followed by Jan Berstein Chargan.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Lizanne Davy and I don't have the answers either, but I just wanted to ask a few questions. I've heard keeping the homeless... Homeless is big business in California. I think that a lot of businesses make money from homelessness. And I'm wondering, how much money does the homelessness industry make? Are we enforcing crimes? Are we allowing the homeless allowed to get, are we, is the homeless allowed to get away with crimes? Are the vast majority of homeless addicted to drugs? And by just giving away housing to the homeless, are we really helping? Is government helping, enabling worse habits? Do we have safe injection sites? Is that helping?
Thank you, next speaker.
Marty Estrada, followed by Jan Berstein Chargan, followed by Sonia Olivas.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I just want to start by saying that we cannot criminalize homelessness. This is not a police endeavor, the police cannot solve these issues. It takes a city, a council members like yourselves, a group of agencies that work together to figure out a solution. Putting a committee together, homeless task force to figure this out, I worked there 10 years ago. We did a lot of great work with Chief Turner about homelessness. It hasn't stopped. I get it, you want to see the place look nice and when you drive into Gilroy, you don't want to see homeless encampments. But let's work together, let's put together a committee and figure this out. Let's get some federal funding to build housing. Let's do an encampment that's sanctioned by the city of Gilroy that's set aside and let's work with that and have people go there, a safe place. And Mr. Tovar, it's incorrect, people that are homeless live here. I've been doing this work for quite some time. They're not outsourced out from San Jose coming here. Morgan Hill had the same issue in their mindset that homeless were coming here because of the, because of the armory that was here by an agency. No, there's homeless and they're here to stay. So the way we work that by putting an ordinance together, you're going to create yourself a herd, a world of hurt with a lawsuit. And the city attorney understands that. Prior to this Boise decision in 2019, there was one before that, Kincaid versus Fresno. They got sued, Fresno City got sued for $2.35 million and they lost in federal court. This is going to happen here. If you don't, if you, you can't say to a homeless person, while we respect you for police, you can't say, we're going to provide you a service and take you to the shelter. It has to be sustainable. They can't go to a shelter and say, well, you only have one day, you can get sued for that. You have to have a long-term process implied, but the way we start that, let's get together a couple of agencies so we can work with the mayor and you all and say, hey, let's process this out, how we can help the folks that are out there that are hurting. Are there drugs out there? Yeah, there's a percentage of drugs. Are there alcoholics out? Yes, but there's a lot of people that are just homeless. So we got to figure out a way, there's some folks that have mental issues.
I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you. Next speaker. Sir, you've done this before, okay, the time, thank you. Okay? So I'm Jan Bernstein Chargan, I sent all of you a lengthy letter, I'm not going to restate all of that here. I do want to invite every single person, it don't need to be an insider to find out how many shelter beds are available tonight. Call 408-385-2400. Any person in this room can do that any day of the week. Please call 408-385-2400 and ask them if they've got a bed available right now in Gilroy, okay? They will tell you what they told me at 11:15 this morning, no. Okay, they will tell me what they told me two weeks ago when a woman who has been harassed on the street, who has been assaulted on the street, who does not want to be on the street, asked me to please get her off the street. And we called that shelter hotline together and she's been on that waiting list since June 17th. Nobody has called to follow up, I called today to follow up. Yeah, they've got her name, no, they haven't been able to assign her to anybody yet because the system is overwhelmed, okay? The shelter beds, the county shelters are not empty, the county shelters are full, okay? The Gilroy Armory is a county shelter, that's who pays for it, so that's why it's their shelter. If the city of Gilroy wanted a Gilroy exclusive shelter, the city of Gilroy would have to pay for it. But as part of the county system, that's county shelter. The county shelters are full and the reason they're full and the reason there's a month's long waiting list is because people want shelter, okay? There's a misconception that people don't want shelter and by the way, it's a harm reduction shelter. There's no sobriety requirement. No, you can't bring drugs in, you can't be using on the site, but you don't have to be clean and sober to get shelter. You can get shelter because the county believes in housing first and harm reduction. No, we don't have safe injection sites, okay? But it's not, the barrier to shelter is the lack of beds. And what we, you know, we heard here, and transportation. I've had people who wanted to go to a shelter on a cold night and no way to get them there. Sometimes I've sent them in an Uber, right? I'm out there on the street. I'm sorry, Jan, your time is up. Okay, thank you. Thank you, next speaker.
I have, last four speakers are Sonia Olivas, Sally Armendaras, Ron Kirkish and Robert Weaver.
Hi, my name is Sonia Olivas. I'm two homeless, I just got placed. I was out five years and it is really hard out there. Campsite, I think it's mostly more than one person and they have campsites because they all get together and we watch each other. That's why they go in a group and if they're alone, then you worry about them because they want to be alone, you know what I mean? I had a lot, I had, I was with 51 people in back of the Compassion Center and there were so many people who were on wheelchairs and stuff like that and it takes a big person to help them out. So I did and now I left them. There's a couple there, you know, and I worry about them every day. There was a lot of violence out there and I actually seen it in front of my eyes and it's something totally different than not to see it. Because I heard about it, I seen it on TV, but I never saw it in front of my eyes. And, you know, a lot of people do want shelter, I wanted shelter, but I didn't go because I can't go around people because I panic, I panic a lot. And so there is people that are sober, I'm sober eight years and it's just, it's just really hard for them, you know, if you take them around the house, everybody has to give it them, again, I used to call for tents. Tents breaking stuff, you know, and we have to live in the rain, we have to live in the wind and I just think it's really bad for people to take their home, it's really hard for them out there.
Thank you, next speaker.
Sally Armendaras. Followed by... Followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Robert Weaver.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Sally Armendaras and I really don't want to repeat what everybody else has already said, but I just want all of you to remember that there by the grace of God go I and each and every one of you. That could be you, it could be your children, your grandchildren, we don't know our future. But remember, they had parents and they are humans, you know? So I wanted to mention that everything they said, we need affordable housing. A few months ago, the issue of affordable housing at the VA parking lot came up and you guys all turned it down, you know? Maybe if we had taken, if all of you had taken that into consideration, we would be having all these fires and all these problems where people have nowhere to stay. So we really do need to create either small housing or a parking area for them or people that are homeless. We go out there and we feed them, I know there's at least 150 people out there and they're people that we grew, some of them that we grew up with. You know, some, I know a couple of them that are Vietnam veterans and that's sad that that's how we treat our vets or that's how we treat our humans. All of you that got elected here, got elected to represent the Gilroy community. That includes people that live in the streets, people that live up in Eagle Ridge, I don't care where they live. You're supposed to represent each and every one of them. And on your agenda, if you go back to item 11, you say you have 9.1 acres of surplus land that belongs to Gilroy. Why can't you set that up for the homeless? There's no reason why you can't, there's no reason why. And there's no reason why the city of Gilroy who can give all that money to the Shark Stadium cannot provide, you know, trash collection for the people that live homeless. There's no reason why you can't provide porta potties, you know?
Your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My time will never be up with the city of Gilroy.
Okay. The next, just, just for this, I meant. Okay, next speaker.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Robert Weaver, followed by Kim Summers.
Hello, again, mayor, community, council. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Bracco for asking this issue to be brought back up. It's important and it's been going on for way too long. Folks, the reason, the original reason that we brought this up was there's a thing going around the states now, other cities, saying that if a person refuses to go to an encampment or to a, a place where they provide housing overnight or whatever, then they're not following the right process, whether they're drugged up or not. They don't have a right to refuse. I, I heard the chief say, well, we negotiate. I, I think the time for negotiation is over. If a person is in our creek, doing bad things, drugs or whatever, they have to go. They can't be sticking around. They have to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert Weaver, followed by Kim Summers.
Good evening. I was glad to see this come before the council again. I was reading the staff report and the Boise decision from the Ninth Circuit Court. It struck me that the Ninth Circuit Court is the most liberal court in our country and has been the most overturned rulings of any other court in the nation. I won't want to address that. There are, in my opinion, the homeless situation is a myriad of things. But you can basically break it down into a bifurcated solution. There are those people who came tonight who want to improve their lot, who want to get on, rejoin society and keep going. Then there are others who don't want anything to do with society. They do not want to improve their lot. They just want to be left alone. The sleeping, sitting, and lame, it's all very benign, but it never stops there. Public defecation, drugs, alcoholism, a number of things. It never stops there. So perhaps we can look at mental illness as a factor. Perhaps there's a number of rules that came out of Sacramento over the last 75 years that essentially shut down the mental health hospitals and took the, the members of those hospitals and put them in our community for us to deal with, with state money. But some of that money never showed up and we were left holding the bag. So it's a complicated issue, but I do think that on the people who are.
It should be in front of you too, is it not?
No, I, I see the logo. Anyway, all the people who are here tonight are not examples of the people who need to be looked at. The ones who aren't here are the problem people. And so I think we can implement other types of violations, like the mayor brought up, the drunkenness, the rules.
Now, your time is up.
And we can fifty one fifty them into a place where they can be cared for.
I have to enforce the same on everybody. Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Last speaker is Kim Summers.
Are the speakers themselves not able to see the clock?
They should be. It's in that monitor in the front there. Not the one on the podium, but the one.
Right, but the one in front. Oh, gosh. Okay, anyway, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kim Summers. I'm going on being homeless for like 10 years. I worked my whole life. I worked at Deans College. I worked at Foothill College. I had my tenure, you know? I'm not some punk from the street. I was a single parent. I just couldn't afford my apartment anymore. I went on disability because I had a hammer toe. And now I have neuropathy and it's getting way worse. I don't want to be out here. Thank God, my, you know, my kids, they, they've made sure I have a car at least to sleep in. But now I hear that if all this goes through, I can't even have that. The cold makes me hurt a lot worse than I do. I just, I struggle so hard just to take a step because the pain is so bad. And being out here in the streets, it's a lot worse. I've been with the Compassion Center for 10 years. I should be housed by now. What the hell? Excuse my language, but you know, what the heck? Why? I am disabled, legally disabled, you know? And like I said, it's getting worse. It's in my nerves now. I've got, um, um, what is it? Um, what is it? I've got a lot of health issues, high blood pressure, anxiety, I mean, everything. I've been to the shelter. There is so many conflicts with so many different personalities. Somebody kept making noise all night long. I couldn't sleep. I wanted to punch him. And I'm not like that, you know? So there is issues as far as going to a shelter. I, we appreciate the beds, but you know, not everybody can go there. I am contagious, you know, sometimes, so I can't be around other people.
I'm sorry, your time is now up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. All right. Does that conclude public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have no other speaker cards at this time.
Okay, so closing a public comment and then coming back to council. And I see Councilmember La Romanios, followed by Councilmember Tovar on the board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so Andy, this is a, this is a question based on a comment that one of the speakers made. What is our requirement with regard to the scope of services that we need to provide? One of the speakers mentioned that you have to provide a space for a certain amount of time. Is that, is that correct? And if so, what is the amount of time that we have to provide a space for?
I'm not aware that actually there's any strict legal definition of the services that need to be provided or for how long shelter beds have to be provided or under exactly what conditions. I've never seen that specifically defined and I don't think there is a, a formal definition.
Okay, all right, that, that's what I knew.
From a practical standpoint, obviously services are very important, but that's going beyond the legal scope.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this question is going to be for you, but just, I want to clarify a comment that was made earlier. The question I asked earlier was what percentage of the homeless here are residents of Gilroy? I didn't make an accusation that they were not from Gilroy, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Then I heard that 65% of them were. So I mean, I guess many of us aren't sure what that actual number of percentages of how many homeless we have and how many are from Gilroy. But that being said, I, I want to thank everybody that's here for expressing your concerns and your compassion for, for the homeless. And also the, the business owners, thank you for coming and sharing your experiences because I think it's good for everyone to hear that. One of the other comments that was made was, you know, you know, do homeless get away with committing crimes? And we need to jail homeless that are causing harm and concerns or, you know, they're, they're doing something bad. And it came across as we as a city aren't doing anything about it. And I, I bring this up because I, and I've said this and everybody knows that I've had an issue with a homeless person that's been stalking me for three years now. And we've had him arrested 10, 15, maybe 20 times. And within an hour, he's back out or he's in jail for a short amount of time. And I talked straight to the DA and I expressed him the concerns I have for my family. But when he's let out shortly after, I mean, it's, it's not Gilroy PD's issue. It's, it's, it's our DA's that's causing that. So I just want to make sure. And then I, I just maybe your feedback on when someone says, why aren't we jailing these individuals who are causing harm?
Yeah, let me start by saying that I said mitigate, not negotiate. And so I'll tell you that we've worked with the district attorney's office with some local folks that we've repeatedly arrested. And, you know, obviously some sort of substance abuse issue or behavioral health issue. And so they used to have resource court and we just met with the district attorney, supervising district attorney in South County. They kind of ran down the process of what would happen if we, for instance, cited someone for being in the park after hours that obviously was unhomed, unhoused. And so their goal is kind of like what, what we're all trying to do. What's, what's the long-term solution? And so if they commit to utilizing some sort of resource in the community and they go back to the judge, they'll in essence drop whatever charge. Now, in, in the case you're referring to, you know, certainly that rises to a whole different criminal level. And so again, with, with that particular case, we, we kept in, in contact with the supervising district attorney and ensured that it was followed up by them. And we've done it over and over again.
No, no, and, yeah, no, no. And again, I'm commending you guys for the job that you guys have done, I think. But once it's out of your guys' hands, because again, I want to make sure folks who make claim that we are not putting these bad individuals, whatever they are, homeless or not homeless, in jail and they're coming right back out, that it, when I hear that, I, I feel like they're saying that you guys are not doing your job. And in reality, that's not how it works. I mean, once you arrest somebody, it goes to the next level. And obviously it's out of your hands after that, right? So I just want to make sure that's clear.
And again, we're, we're, we're dealing with the action, whether you're unhoused or not. You know, certainly if there's other factors, then you know, that's part of the, the process via the court to try to set up some sort of services. Or in the other case, then, you know, impose some sort of punishment.
All right, Councilmember Bracco.
So Jimmy, if, if we found a way to provide a lot where they could camp, then we could enforce it on the rest of the city?
Well, I don't think there's a clear answer. I think what we're hearing is that the Boise decision doesn't necessarily require you to solve the problem for the entire community. It, it does require you to find alternate housing. So I think that could possibly, you know, work in that situation. But I don't know that it, it, it doesn't also address, you know, some of the other issues that we're dealing with, which is, we talked about the misdemeanor component, not the, not the felony or criminal component. So you may just be taking it from one spot, collecting it and putting it in another. I, I don't want, I don't want to give people like the false sense that that solves everything because we just don't know. And we've seen other communities try that with, I think, very mixed results.
Okay. And Chief, what about areas like over behind the Leavesley Inn? They're all camp right against the wall. If one of them catches on fire, the hotel's going to go up. Why is that being allowed?
I think that's Valley Water. I think it's Valley Water.
It's a safety issue and.
Yeah, we respond to fires out there, the, the illegal campfires and all. Doesn't matter if it's, it's water district. If it's, if there's a crime involved, we're going to go out. But as far as the cleanup and try to mitigate the abatement part of it, then that's the water district.
But my, my question is, the, the camping, the, the tents being right there next to the hotel's wall is, is a health and safety issue for the tenants of the hotel, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if there's something code compliance that we've dealt with something before. But you know, we see that at, at the stores all around the city where there's, you know, folks camping right next to the building. So again, I don't know if there's, there's something in, in the code where code compliance would be able to use it as, or, or, or the fire marshal.
Okay, and Jimmy, are, are we talking to the county and the water district on a regular basis?
We are. We've had continual communications with the water district and they have resumed some of the activities, especially the water district, that they postponed during COVID. I think just this week, the water district was doing some work along the levees, or I'm sorry, along the creeks. So we, we know when they're going to be around and what they're doing. They just don't do it. I, I guess you could say often enough, as, as was stated earlier, that you do it and then the situation returns to where it was just a few weeks later. So it's almost not noticeable that anything was done. It's just not enough, you know, to really make a huge impact.
You know, I, I think that our city needs to be more vocal and putting pressure on the county. We have a beautiful county hospital around here. And we have people with mental issues around town, people that have drug, drug problems. Where our county is supposed to be helping us with this stuff and they're not. And I think we need to put pressure on them to get some mental health services at the hospital and some drug rehabilitation services out there. I think that would go a long way to solve some of these issues. And the water district, you know, I think we need to be on them too. They're, they're not doing their part. You know, something's going to happen sooner or later. Hotel's going to catch fire. A truck, you know, you drive on the freeway and look at the fence. You see these new pieces they put in there? It's because trucks came off the side of the road. And, and one day, a car or a truck's going to come off the highway and, and it's not going to be pretty because you're a fireman, you see accidents. It, it'll take out a lot of people. And I, I just really want to, want us to try to avoid something like that happening.
Anything else?
Well, the, the biggest complaint I get from residents and businesses is the cities, everybody's sticking up for the homeless. Nobody's sticking up for the residents. And I, I believe we need to stick up for both, you know, as we're representatives of the city and that's all, everybody in the city. Doesn't matter if, if they were born here or they came into town last week. If they're here, they're a resident. So I, I would like to see us maybe reconvene the subcommittee and try to come up with some solutions for this and some, some ways that we can make a dent. I mean, you know, 70%, I've seen numbers of 70% of women in the homeless camps have been sexually assaulted multiple times. That's not compassion, letting someone live like that. That's, that's cruelty. You know, and you see some of these mentally ill people, that's not compassion, making them live like that. I was on Leavesley right by Black Bear Diner last week and there was a guy with his pants down masturbating. That's not right. No one in, I don't care if you live in the creek or in Eagle Ridge, there are certain things that are expected you, expected of you as a citizen of, of our city. And, and we need to make it clear, you know, dumping your trash all over is not right. Using our sidewalks as your public toilet? No. Just because someone's homeless doesn't mean that they give up what it's like just to live as a human being and be clean and stuff. And I think we need to work with the service providers that take food into the encampments to help us with this by bringing, you know, stuff out. You know, they, they drop off food in containers every day. We'll bring out garbage bags and containers. I know the Compassion Center, they, they do it sometimes where for shower tokens and the, the homeless folks are perfectly happy with picking up the trash and, and turning it in. So they get a shower token or something. So that's some of my ideas. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I know Councilmember Marks is up. Could I reply to Councilmember Bracco's comments?
If that's okay with Councilmember Marks. I don't, I just want to start that because then, yeah, if it's a specific.
Yeah, no, no, and, yeah, yeah, it would be fast, sorry. And Councilmember Bracco, thank you for those comments, but as part of the ad hoc committee, you, I, and Councilmember Marks, and I agree with you, I'm not disagreeing, but we did discuss all of this here. We did discuss hospital. We did discuss the county. We did discuss being proactive, you know, so I, I want to make sure it's not something that you're presenting as something new. It's things that we've already discussed and tried to work on and we came back with recommendations. And I agree with you. We need to get the ad hoc committee back. That's great. But I just want to make sure that you're not claiming that we did not have these special.
But we have to go further.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's the whole thing. You know, we need to get in and lobby. Okay, so stop and now go ahead.
Okay, now it's my turn. I agree with you, Councilmember Tovar, but we have to go further. We have to lobby the state. Governor Newsom talks about this huge surplus the state has. But not once did he give a solution in building rehab hospitals or mental hospitals. You know, listening to TJ's story, and I'm really sorry. You know, listen to TJ's story and I'm really sorry she had to leave. The people who are working that are unhoused need housing. They are putting skin into the game. I personally do not believe in housing everyone if they're gonna do drugs, alcohol or have mental illness. I would not put a hard-working person next door to someone who's going crazy. I would not do that. That is, thank you, I'm so glad you're agreeing with me because that is cruel. Oakland, San Francisco, Los Angeles saw what happened when they put everyone together in a hospital. They had rapes, they had assaults, they had robberies. No, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right. And I say that this council has a lot of work to do and we need to sit down and really talk about this. We can certainly start lobbying Sacramento and say, we want money and we want to get this problem solved. No more 72-hour olds. They don't do anything because you're knocking to the root of the problem. When you have someone who is addicted in any way, they need a year or longer because your whole goal is to get them on their feet, get them cleaned up, get them job training and still support them so that they don't fall backwards. And all we do is talk and talk and massage the issue. Why is the public so angry? The public is angry because they are tired of looking at the garbage. They're tired of seeing the people walk down the streets screaming and hollering. They're tired of the filth that we saw in Miller Park with that couple who were so strung out. The neighbors were very upset that they were going to the bathroom at the playground in front of children and the neighbors. I mean, that's unacceptable. We don't have to live like that. I'm gonna maybe say a harsh statement right now for some of the unhoused, but you know, some of, they do have family members. And yes, it's always nice to live on your own and be independent, but you know, living with a family member is sure a lot better than living on the streets and experiencing the abuse that you're experiencing in the encampments. Go home and give help. One family member, one unhoused, told a friend of mine, yes, my husband and I are drug addicts and alcoholics. We have a daughter, but we don't want to live by her rules, so we're staying out here. Your problem doesn't become society's problem. Sorry, you change your way, you go home and you get cleaned up. We all have to do things we don't like, right, folks? Yes. But you know what? You suck it up and you have to do it because we're spending a lot of time and money on the unhoused and we are not solving this problem. And so, yes, Councilmember Rocco, we have to reconvene. We have to get serious with this as a council. Maybe we can become the model city of California that finally does something. And I liked what you said about giving them tokens to get food. If you want dinner, you're gonna clean up your encampments. There is no reason that you take your garbage and you throw it everywhere and then say, I need food for the next day. Uh-uh. You're not gonna clean up, you go hungry that night. But it's called tough love. If they're okay to move into an apartment and live on taxpayers' dollars because they can't afford it because they're not working, then they have to be responsible to clean up their encampments. So they want, I think there has to be a lot of tough love all the way around and we're gonna make it a much better place for the unhoused. And then if they don't like the rules that we impose here in Gilroy, then goodbye, go find someone else to take care of, to take care of you. That's all, that's my rant.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you. I'd first like to say that we cannot make any assumptions about anybody's home or family being better than being on the street because God knows that many of the people on the streets have, could tell you that it's not, right? So I will not make any assumptions about that or take a gavel to anybody's life. It's not my life to judge. But what I will say is that it's not, the onus isn't just on the county to provide services for the people who live in our community. The county is responsible for mental health, the county is responsible for public health and they can do a better job, but so can we. What kind of funding, what kind of resources did we dedicate to the homeless? We bought a garbage truck. We hired two quality-of-life officers. For what? For criminalization? It certainly hasn't housed anybody. Pit Stop Outreach, the Compassion Center, a number of other organizations have worked very hard, day in and day out, to house people. And I've never seen the rate of housing that has been accomplished in a decade that they are doing now. And it's because they're working in partnership. They are working with the quality-of-life officers, they are working together and because people have been stable. Thanks to the pandemic policies that kept people stable and kept us from doing sweeps, now the Compassion Center and Pit Stop can go find people, offer them the services, up their VI spigots, do what they need to get them housed. When we sweep them, when we take their things, we destabilize them. How would you feel if somebody else came into your house, took your things and arbitrarily decided what was good and what wasn't, what you needed, what you didn't and where you were gonna go? Of course it destabilizes people. Of course it causes people to rant and go on the street and act erratically, right? And in ways that we, you know, makes us clutch our pearls, right? We cannot cohesion destabilizing people. We have to work by best practices. And those things are told to us by the experts. It's not criminalizing, it's not getting people out of their homes, their tent, their RV, what have you. So we, and we need to do our part in dedicating those resources. How much did we offer for a safe parking? $30,000, $50,000? It's nothing. And the nonprofits told us, that's nothing. They could not do anything with that amount of money. And yet we're willing to dedicate 10 times as much to a garbage truck. So I, I mean, I think we have to be responsible. We have surplus land in our city. We have land that we can use to create a safe parking spot where people can be monitored, they could be accessed, they could be reached, they could be given resources and food. We have to step up and do it. In 2018, I was on the planning commission and the city had asked, the city staff had asked us to stop issuing licenses to RV parks and campgrounds and storage facilities. And we were already in a housing crisis. And the planning commission, we voted no, we would not stop licensing those businesses because people needed somewhere to park their houses. People needed somewhere to tent, to camp for a few weeks and then move on to another place. And yet this council, many of the city council at the time, many of whom are still on the council right now, voted against that and voted to stop licensing RV parks and mobile home parks. And those places are impacted. And there's waiting lists that are months and months long and places that have absolutely no vacancy for years. So we are setting this up and we're not doing anything about it except pointing fingers and trying to patronize people.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember LaRomaine Yeuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, this is a huge issue. And addressing homelessness, getting at its roots, this is something I think that is, we've been struggling with for a long time. A lot of people at the county level, the state level and the national level are struggling with. So I'm gonna try to bring it back down to scope, to something that we can get our arms around on here in the city. And that tonight is focusing on this no camping, you know, ordinance and the enforcement thereof. And so for me, as I've listened to all of the different speakers, I mean, it's how do we find that balance between compassion and compliance with the law? It goes both ways, right? You know, you have to have absolutely both of those things. What I see when I look at this proposal here with regard to the enforcement is a memorialized process that offers notice to people who will be impacted, the unhoused. It offers storage of personal property. It involves an assessment if people need services. I mean, these are, that's the compassion side of things. Now, does that get everybody everything that they want to see? No. But that is a pretty good way in which to balance the compassion with the compliance of the law. And as I've, you know, asked some questions, trying to ascertain what is the scope of our responsibility, you know, it sounds like our police department is confident that they're able to meet the requirements of the law as we understand it now. And, you know, as someone who's an attorney, I can tell you, just because you're in compliance with the law doesn't mean you're not gonna be sued. People get sued for any number of things, organizations, that happens in life, okay? So there's always gonna be some legal risk. It doesn't mean that the cases brought against you necessarily have value. So I think based on the steps that we are memorializing to show compassion and at the same time, trying our best to meet the legal requirements as we understand them, given the uncertainty, I think this is that bargain that, you know, that I can live with and I hope a lot of others can as well. I mean, we heard about wanting to work together. This seems like a pretty good way to try to start doing that in a small way, but an important way here in our own city.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Councilmember Rocco, for bringing this up. And I, you know, I want to hear more of your suggestions, like you, you know, you said that we have, you know, open spaces there, is there sanctioned encampments? And I understand there's risk for it, but I want to hear more, you know, thinking beyond the scope. I mean, I'm not in favor of restarting the ad hoc committee because you guys already did that and we spent a long time on it. We have 14 recommendations. But the top three that we're funding so far, you know, they do nothing to prevent homelessness. I can't speak to services, I'm not, that's not my, that's not my expertise, but I can speak to, you know, our housing policies. You know, for instance, you know, we had a chance to move forward and support a Measure 8 funded project, which somebody brought up in the public, that would have brought extremely low-income units to Gilroy, funded by the county. And the majority of this council temporarily blocked that. I am compassionate, you know, to both residents and the unhoused. Because I too have thought twice about going to Miller Park with my daughter because of illicit activities. I don't stand for that. And when we talked about those recommendations, you know, I really brought forward and I said, I do see an end to homelessness. I do see a point where we can enforce no camping because we have alternatives. But we can't demand that the county only house Gilroy citizens. That's not fair, that's the county program. But I am more than willing to come to the table and speak about actually funding, you know, whether it's temporary shelters or anything else. You know, I'm very supportive of going after illicit behavior that jeopardizes public health and safety. But displacing someone who we haven't really made an honest effort to provide housing, to me, I, it's just not something I can support. And I'm not really feeling very confident that if we do this ordinance, that we're not gonna set ourselves up for liability and to get sued. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, sorry, I'm done. I just want to ask the clarifying question. So I think Councilmember Armandares said earlier that the quality-of-life officers have been working in partnership with all the agencies that have made a real difference, correct? Is that what we're, is that what you said earlier?
Yeah.
Okay. So I want to make sure that we understand that. That so as one former ad hoc committee member for the homeless, that was the whole purpose of hiring our quality-of-life officers. And to say that by hiring them is we're criminalizing homeless, that's not what that was for. And maybe the other members can agree with me or not. The main purpose of us hiring our quality-of-life officers is to work in partnerships with the agencies, to work in partnerships with the city. So I'm glad to hear that what you guys are doing, you're doing good work. You heard it here, you're hearing it from the agencies. So I want to make sure that we put that in a, in a good light, that the work that you're doing is helping, it's not hurting the homeless. So I just want to make sure that I heard that correctly and I wanted to commend you guys for the job that you guys are doing so far because that is part of the partnership that we're talking about. And I think, and maybe Councilmember Rocco and Marks can agree, that that was the sole purpose of us hiring two quality-of-life officers and make sure that you're not out there just arresting, just arresting. You're out there working with agencies, with the city, to help our homeless individuals, no matter where they're from. And I think hearing it from a council member, hearing it from agencies tells us that we're doing a good job so far. Yeah, a lot more work to do, but we've got a good start here and I want to thank you guys. That's it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna make a few comments and then we can go. Oh, I'm gonna go next because I haven't, I haven't said anything. Yeah, I'm sorry the Measure 8 housing thing was brought up because that was clearly because it was being proposed on the Transit Center and it was instead of our transit. And we went through that and we had lots of study sessions about it. So to just say as though we didn't want, as this council didn't want the housing is a complete misleading statement. We have been working ever since with the Office of Supportive Housing to get Measure 8-funded housing on an adjacent parcel that's not on the Transit Center. So we are very much pushing for that and hoping we get one since we only have one other Measure 8-funded housing project in Gilroy. The shelter is a county shelter, that is correct. It is the only one in South County. Morgan Hill does not have a shelter. The armory is run by the county. It is a building that is owned by the state, run by the county in Gilroy and it accepts people from anywhere in the county. So it isn't just Gilroy Shelter, that is also a true statement. But it should also be made known or made clear that it is the only shelter south of San Jose in this county. And so that it is in Gilroy, you know, the fact that Gilroy doesn't have one, Morgan Hill doesn't either. And so these are all things that need to be addressed. I would like to bring us back, as Councilmember LaRomaine Yeuss did, to the, what, the potential motions and ask that maybe someone, I'm gonna call for a motion or even make a motion. We can still have a discussion still if more people want to talk. But I'd like to rein this in and ask if we, to see if we have support for, as we were suggesting, which is to enforce ordinances on public property if we do have homeless shelter space available beforehand. The way the motion is written here, the way the potential motion is written.
And I would make that motion.
Okay. And can we do it at the same time as the next one or should they be separate? Separate? Okay. So the first, the first one then is, Ty, do they need to be separate?
No, Madam Mayor, they can be on motion as long as it's clear.
I think legally, they don't have to be separate, but if separate discussion is desired, that would be the reason.
Okay. So if we could just, the motion then, again, if there's shelter available beforehand, ensuring the particular shelter that it is, that it's offering to connect the individual with and could accommodate their needs pursuant to the ADA and then also to authorize city personnel to clean and clear encampments and public parks and other public land in compliance with the written protocol that provides a number of safeguards required by the courts, including outreach and noticed occupants, provision of social services, photographic documentation, safeguarding of occupants' personal property and the making available of shelter space for displaced occupants.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so that was first made by Councilmember LaRomaine Yeuss, seconded by Councilmember Tovar. So Councilmember Rocco, you still have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, just to back up what Councilman Tovar said, he was right. And one of the things I think we would, should look at is, look at a way to have some kind of a parking program or a safe shelter. We have plenty of parks, huge parks, that we could maybe cordon off an area and run it, and look in the running, the same way they run the park in Morgan Hill. You have to be in by a certain time at night and you have to be out at 8:00 in the morning. It's not a place to hang out and do nothing. And so I would like to see us ask our staff to come back with, because we're gonna need to know a lot from Andy, the legalities of it.
Is that a substitute motion or?
Well, no, it's just something, if the council agrees, we can just.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see you formalize it. Because I am willing to support this tonight if you can formalize something for staff to come back. I do not feel comfortable sending them to a shelter for one day and letting them out. It's the same exact thing that law enforcement does. And I don't think it'll solve it. But I think you're on to something when you talk about actually having a space that we can say so, our officers can say, they don't have to call a 408 number. You know, the officer can say, I've got six beds in a shelter that we own and because we found them services, I'd rather have them say that than worry about a phone number they gotta call before they even make contact.
Okay, I'll make that motion after.
Well, I think you should add it into this motion because there's only gonna be one motion, we're gonna move on.
Well, who made the motion? Marie or?
No.
Peter, would you take that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
I have a question before we vote.
And so what Councilmember Tovar was saying, when we had the ad hoc committee and we met with homeless individuals, we did not get any feedback from the homeless folks that they did not want police officers. They wanted the police officers. The ones that were against it was the homeless advocates. But all of the homeless folks we talked to and even some called later that they would feel safer with police officers out there. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. In this motion.
In this motion, if there is an illegal campsite and there are beds available, but the people refuse to move or go to the armory or wherever the beds are going to be, um, will that campsite still be broken down? Because they're refusing, refusing, so if they refuse, it's just going to stay there and it'll be an illegal camp.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm confused with what exactly we added to the motion. Do you understand it, Peter? Do you want to try to rephrase it since you, you accepted it? Do you want to rephrase it? I wish we hadn't yet, unbelated, but.
Yeah. So my, my understanding is that it would be asking staff to come back as part of, uh, part of the discussion to, uh, to look at alternatives or future considerations.
Using our property.
Yeah.
So the motion, the mo, the orig, the motion as written in our, on our agenda, which was made and seconded, that, that motion stands and in addition, asking staff to come back with?
With alternatives for how we could use our property.
Public space?
Yeah.
Our, 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 our own dollars, our own, yeah, not, yeah.
For safe camping specific.
So, yeah, the, the more I think about it, this, this is starting to get a little complicated. So may, maybe it would be best if we just separate it and then just do it that way. So we can address any subsequent questions on its own merit.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been seconded on the floor. So we need to vote on that and then whatever happens after that is up to whatever council. But right now we have the motion that is just as written on our agendas. The public can see too, that's what's been made and seconded. The friendly amendment was accepted, but now it's not? That's what I just heard.
Yeah, but it, it was originally now amended.
It has been unamended.
Okay.
Yeah, amended and separated.
So it is as originally read, do you need it read again or do you want to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay.
A motion, uh, made by Councilmember LaRouman Yost, seconded by Councilmember Rocco.
Tovar.
Tovar, sorry, to authorize the Gilroy Police Department to enforce no camping ordinances on public property if it offers space at a homeless shelter to individuals beforehand and ensures that the particular shelter that it, it is offering to connect the individuals with, uh, could accommodate their needs pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, followed by the authorize city personnel to clean and clear encampments in public parks and other public land in compliance with a written protocol, GPD Police Policy 411, that provides a number of safeguards required by the courts, including outreach and notice to occupants, provisions of social services, photographic documentation, safeguarding of occupants' personal property, and the making available of shelter space for displaced occupants.
Right. Okay. So that's digital voting only?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that passes five to two. So is there something else?
Then I would like to make the motion to, uh, have staff look at it and come back with us, back to us with a report on, uh, our options, what, what we could do, what it'll cost, and the legalities of it, uh, from Andy, um, because I'm sure there's a lot of legalities involved in it and what other cities are doing about it.
Safe camping.
Safe camping, yes.
I could second that. Yeah, can you, can you put yourself on the board because I've got Carol?
No, no, no. Oh, I think that was from last.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then yes, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Rocco, so the recommendation you're making, that's different than the safe parking issue that we, we talked about as an ad hoc committee when.
It's pretty much the same thing, except it can have tents and.
But no, no, I just want to make sure, uh, because when we went out there, nobody replied back wanting us to use their properties. But now you're saying that this would be city property and not the community property.
But it would still require a service provider to manage it. That's where the issue is going to be.
Right.
That's the cost of it, that's why.
Right, in addition.
These things are only as good as the management of the site. Yeah. So he, he made the motion and I think Councilmember Armand Derris seconded it.
Correct.
Um, so yeah, it's voting now. Okay.
Thank you.
Ten point.
So that passed unanimously.
That passed, yeah, that passed unanimously to, for us to hear a report back. Right, that's, that's what the motion was, to get a report back. Okay. Um, ten point three, I'm, I would like to, if it's okay, can I call for just a three minute recess here? Okay. Just a very, very, very brief recess, we'll be right back. Okay, those in the audience, please either, if you're in the audience, could you please take a seat or exit the building?
All right, buddy.
Is there a louder way to do it? Thank you. We are reconvening, please. We are on agenda item ten point three, approval of the Santa Teresa interim fire station, alternate location and funding. Chief Wyatt's going to give us this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Let me first start off by saying that this is, what we're seeking tonight is, uh, approval of our recommendation, uh, for the Santa Teresa interim fire station, alternative location and funding. To approve the construction of an interim fire station in the estimated amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars located on the corner of Tenth Street and Deansa Place in the Santa Teresa Fire Response District. Number two, to adopt a budget amendment resolution to appropriate three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in the capital projects fund for the construction of an alternative site or at an alternative site of, of an interim fire station. So currently, we, uh, we've been housed at the, uh, the Teak Building for the past two years and we've, uh, obviously are still pursuing the twelve hours, uh, each day, seven days a week, uh, but we're, as we get closer to, um, uh, asking you for full funding for, uh, staffing at, staffing the Santa Teresa Station twenty-four, seven, uh, we find that the Teak Building is inadequate for our housing needs. Primarily, uh, if we start to work, uh, twenty-four hours, it lacks showering facilities. This is important for, uh, deconning ourselves after a fire or, uh, after coming in contact with, uh, blood or blood products, uh, on EMS calls, uh, so on and so forth. So lacking the showering, uh, facilities is important to us as well as, uh, the lack of kitchen facilities at the Teak Building and also the lack of a secure garage to house our fire apparatus to prevent, uh, uh, theft and also to get, keep it out of the weather. Uh, secondly, it's also a poor emergency response location. Um, it's not centrally located in the district, so we, we adequately serve, uh, Los Anamos, uh, and parts of, uh, of, uh, the Chestnut District, but we're not exactly in the best place for the, uh, the Santa Teresa District itself. Uh, so that's where we, I say that, uh, there's poor access, uh, uh, to points west, east and south. And also there's delays with, uh, school traffic, uh, when schools in session primarily, uh, in the morning and in the afternoon when, uh, parents are picking up their children. So we've selected an interim site at the corner of Tenth Street and Deansa Place. Uh, this location, um, has some advantages. It's, uh, city-owned property. It's three blocks from the, uh, permanent, uh, fire station site. It's also, uh, going to be the future site of the Tenth Street Bridge and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. And also it, uh, provide, uh, we would, uh, seek temporary placement of a modular living quarters that includes, uh, kitchen facilities, uh, showering facilities, obviously sleeping facilities and, um, eventually a, uh, a metal garage to house our fire apparatus. It also, uh, provides, uh, a pretty decent emergency response, response as, access into the district because it's more centrally located and it's, uh, uh, a mere one and a half minutes from Santa Teresa Boulevard. So, uh, that's a major artery for us to respond through and there's no delays, uh, due to school traffic. The estimated, uh, site of construction is, uh, three hundred and forty-four thousand, uh, like I've stated before. This work would include a hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, estimated for the, uh, site work. Uh, this would be both grading and compaction as well as, uh, some pavement. Uh, forty thousand dollars for security fence and gate, forty thousand dollars for a two apparatus bay garage, uh, seventy-two thousand dollars, uh, for a G two dispatching equipment. And I might add that, uh, this equipment would, uh, is a modular, uh, format, so it can easily be transferred to the new permanent station, so it wouldn't be lost. Thirty-two thousand dollars for electrical work to install the G two equipment and then ten thousand dollars for utilities. And if you see, um, I've placed, uh, asterisks at each of the, uh, uh, three locations here and what this, uh, comes to is that these are sunk costs. In other words, they cannot be reused. Uh, we'll actually lose them when we go to the permanent fire station site. The rest of it can be, um, uh, applied as this new site is being built or, uh, for the permanent facility once it's built. But these, uh, costs, the sunk costs amount to a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that can't be recovered. The projected, uh, construction timeline and public outreach, uh, right now our construction timeline is as follows. PG&E utility work, uh, should take approximately two months. We might be able to, um, uh, hone it down a little bit sooner, but, uh, it can be done concurrently along with the, uh, site construction, which, uh, we estimate to be one to two months. And then, uh, also concurrently with the trailer as it's being built, once, once I, we come back to you, uh, either in August or September to get full approval for that funding. We haven't, we don't have a total cost yet, so, uh, we have to put it out for bid before we, we know. We, um, we examined something about three years ago, but, uh, we know that costs have significantly increased since then. And so the, uh, projected move-in date, uh, with the modular trailer in the site, uh, fully, uh, constructed, uh, we anticipate, uh, in February of twenty twenty-three. And then as far as public outreach, this is not exactly a, a position where, uh, the public, uh, when they bought their homes anticipated a fire station, but it is going to be where there will be future construction once, uh, once the, uh, city gets the approval from the state for a, uh, bridge. But, so to that point, uh, we would, uh, be notifying, uh, our local neighbors in the, uh, in the area of the, um, Deansa, uh, place, uh, with a letter and also notification to Gilroy Unified School District as well as messaging on the city website, express mail, next door and social media. Uh, we, we, uh, we just, um, projected they would take about two weeks, um, or two weeks prior to construction to notify everyone, but we could actually, uh, extend it out a little bit further, uh, so we'd give everyone a, an opportunity. And of course, we're announcing it here today as well. And I'll, I'll take any questions you might have.
Yeah, Chief, I, I just have one before I get to the board. Um, neither the site, the temporary site now or this one is what we want. We want the permanent site.
Correct.
So do I understand you correctly in that moving the temporary site from where it is now to as proposed, in addition to being far better accommodations for our firefighters, is actually at least slightly better in response time?
Yes.
Than the, than the current temporary station?
Yeah, uh, that, that's a great question and I'll just, um, let me back up a couple slides. So let me see if I can do this correctly here. So, um, let me go to the Teak side. Okay, so this, the map that I'm showing you right now is where the, the Teak Building is located. Uh, basically X marks the spot. The problem with its location, it's deep within the ranch side of the, uh, park and so the only access onto, uh, to reach, um, uh, I think it's Park and, uh, Greenwich, um, is through this bike path right here. And the bike path, uh, we can only go at a very slow rate of speed. And again, going back to when the school is letting out, uh, we have to shoo the kids out away. And of course, now the cars are, um, backed up along the, uh, Greenwich, uh, as they're picking up their children. So it, it takes us a while to get through there. Um, the opposite direction, going through the, uh, parking lot all the way to, uh, Miller, that takes us without anybody in our way, that takes us a minute and fifty seconds to get to Miller. So almost two minutes.
Yeah.
So, um, by, I'll go, let me go to the other.
But you've answered my question. It's, it's good.
Okay, all right.
It's better all around. That's what I wanted.
Yes, better all around.
Everybody to hear too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And if the mayor would have followed the board, I had the same exact question that she had. So, but it's okay. And I, I thank you. And you know what? I, I, I'm in support of this. I, I agree from my discussions I've had. Um, it's a better alternative, um, for you all and for the city. Um, and then you answered the question about outreach to the neighbors, you know. But the one thing I was going to also ask is regarding traffic impact, and you answered that as well, not necessarily in the residents, because I don't think you guys cause a lot of traffic. It's vice versa.
Correct.
And for it not to be near a school makes, makes your, sort of your path a lot easier and quicker. So with that, that information I got from what the questions and what you shared today, I, I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rocco?
Chief, realistically, when do you anticipate the rail station being online, being built?
Okay, so, um, Jimmy might be able to answer part of that, but, uh, I'll, I'll just say that, um, uh, we're anxiously awaiting the final, um, uh, outcome of the negotiations with the, uh, Glen Loma Development Group. And, uh, so, uh, once it's finally, uh, once it's finalized and we have access to the site and the, and the, uh, uh, the money, uh, the funding, we can, uh, go full steam ahead and we, we, uh, estimate anywhere between two and three years to actually get the permanent site built or the permanent station built on the permanent site.
Jimmy?
I wouldn't believe anything anybody tells you on how long it's going to take to get the permanent station. And I say that because, uh, after working for the last two years on negotiations with Glen Loma, we have made so much progress, we decided that we have better, we'll have better luck with the temporary fire station. Uh, even if we came to an agreement tomorrow, I would say two to three years, just like the chief said. I don't see an agreement coming tomorrow. So we're relying on the provisions of the agreement right now, which is when the, um, when the issuance of the eleven hundred building permit occurs, Glen Loma is responsible for providing the fire station. Uh, we don't know when that's going to be, so we're.
They stop at ten ninety-nine.
That, that, that is within the parameters of the agreement. Um, I don't think they're motivated to do that, but, uh, we have learned through this process that we, we're just tired of waiting. And so this is a, this is a good medium solution, um, that takes care of the problems we have. Uh, and we'll continue to work on the permanent, but we're under no legal obligation, I'm sorry, Glen Loma is under no legal obligation to build that until the eleventh of the permit.
So if it's going to take this long, wouldn't it be cheaper just to buy the trailers rather than renting them?
Well, I don't, I don't, I can't speak to that, but, uh, the thing is, is that if we buy them, then what do we do with them? And so, uh, there are some assets that it's better to lease, uh, because we can also replace them, we can also have them modified if we, they're not working for us, but we're not sunk into a, a cost that we couldn't, um, recoup. So, um, I don't know what these things cost individually, but.
The, uh, I'm going to go back three years ago. It was about a hundred thousand dollars to, um, to get it constructed. What it would cost to actually, uh, purchase it outright, probably double that. Okay. Probably today, yeah.
Okay, Council, are you, Councilmember Rocco, done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Armand Derris?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, are, are firefighters, they're not working the twenty-four hours at this spot right, right now? They're doing twelve hours?
No, ma'am. They're, they're currently only working, uh, twelve hours. I will say that, uh, uh, over the, uh, Fourth of July weekend, because of the excessive, uh, call volume and fires we were getting, we did up staff, but, uh, that's a rarity.
Okay. It's not a regular practice in a facility like this. And will that, that hold true except in an emergency through February, that they only have to work, do the twelve hours?
Uh, uh, well, I'll just say that I am going to come back to council and ask for funding for, um, some firefighter positions. So based on that, uh, uh, I'm looking forward to you saying yes and we can, uh, actually house our fire, firefighters for twenty-four hours, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I'm sorry to dance around the question, but I'm.
Now I got it.
Putting the cart before the horse.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to open public comment. Do we have anyone on this?
No, no speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment.
Mayor?
Yes?
Could I make a motion for the approval of the Senator Lisa interim fire station?
Second, of course. Okay, that motion was made by Councilmember Tovar, and I believe it was seconded by Councilmember Armandares. And the resolution is separate, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just stop, okay, so on this, this is to approve construction of the interim fire station. Digital voting. Okay, and that's unanimous? And would you like to make a second?
Mayor would like to move for a motion for the approval of the resolution as well.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Tovar to adopt the resolution. The resolution is to appropriate three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in the capital projects fund for the construction at the alternate site of an interim fire station.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Romanios, and that's also, no, roll call vote on that one.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romanios?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that's also unanimous. All right, ten point four.
Thank you very much.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the submission to the qualified electors of the city of a certain measure relating to the proposed city charter amendment at the special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, 2022, as called by resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-six. Jimmy, explain it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are, we are returning on the day before the deadline for just a minor revision to the language that you approved just a few weeks ago. And you did, you announced we approve a special ballot election to be on the November eighth ballot. We already talked about what that does. It increases formal bidding threshold for public projects, adds best value in design build contracting as options, and modernizes public noticing bid solicitation rules in the charter. That section there is the one in which we ran into a little bit of a hiccup, but we're here today to try to make sure that we address that. The modernization noticing a bid selection, the existing charter requires bid advertisements in the newspaper. And the, one of the issues that we have in Gilroy is that we do not have a daily newspaper. We have a weekly. And so for some of the programs or some of the grants that we accept, we have a very short timeline in order to accept them. And so the publication in a weekly newspaper is not necessarily practical in all situations. I've, I don't play on social media very often, but I think there have been claims that this was an attempt by the city to go into the darkness or to circumvent, you know, public knowledge. I couldn't argue more against that, that this is simply a result of having a weekly newspaper. And so we had some good discussions with the dispatch. We reached out to them and myself and the city attorney and Bryce Atkins and discussed what can we do here to try to see if we can assure you that this isn't our intent. And so we understood their points of view. We do understand that the dispatch is the local paper of circulation and that we had never had any intentions of not continuing to use them. And so that is something that we were at least able to communicate with them. We aren't, we aren't looking at bidding process as so much as informing the public. We're trying to inform bidders. Sure, we want the public to know what we're bidding out, but at the end of the day, the purpose of public bidding is to get the best price, to get the best product we can get for the residents. So having that balance between using a local paper of circulation and also a national bidding site is a good balance to have, and we feel like we can strike that with this. So we actually just changed one sentence, and I'll even read it at the very bottom. It's highlighted in red, and it says, "A publication", so we have four options where we said we would advertise, and one of them was publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city by one or more insertions, the first of which shall be at least seven days before the time for opening bids. This method of publication shall be used if available. And so the if available is really what's important here. If we have the ability to meet the deadlines, this is a, you know, a bid that we're worrying in a couple of months, of course, we're going to advertise in the dispatch, we'll continue to do so. If we have another grant where we have to, I have to sign it within five days and then go ask council for permission, or we'll lose the money, I'm going to sign it. But I think it would have been disingenuous for the city to say, oh, sure, we'll use the dispatch when mathematically the dates don't line up. So I understand their concerns, but I think this is a fair resolution and something that I'm glad we at least were able to discuss and get their point of view. So this is the only line that we're changing. We do ask that council adopt a resolution. Everything else you approved before is done and finished, and we're on our way. But this will allow us to make sure that the use of the newspaper continues whenever available. So I'd be happy to answer your questions for you at this time.
Thank you. All right, council, does council have any questions? Or we'll go straight to public comment? Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
No public comments, okay. Closing public comment, so looking for possible action to adopt this little change.
Move adoption of the recommended change.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, that motion was made by Councilmember La Romanios and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romanios?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. Okay, item eleven, eleven point one. Resolution declaring a portion of the Gilroy Sports Park property as surplus pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-two-two-one. Bryce giving the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, this item is for the surplus designation for the sports park. This is a follow-up to a council item on June twentieth. So the sports park property being considered for surplus is approximately nine acres. There is no current or planned use by the city for city government purposes as is defined in the Surplus Lands Act. In order to consider other uses, it requires compliance with the Surplus Land Act process, a process which promotes affordable housing development and historically has been used for open space preservation as well. On the screen is a map of the proposed surplus property site. As you can see, it's within the Gilroy Sports Park master plan area. It's to the west of Highway one-on-one, which you can see on the right-hand side, and it's to the south of the Phase One, Phase Two Ballpark, Diamond, and parking lots and structures. The Surplus Land Act process requires compliance with the process in order to sell or lease land. The first step in this is actually the item that the council is considering tonight, which is to actually declare the property surplus. The next process, next step in the process is to issue the notice of availability. That's issued to the Housing Community Development Department of the State of California as well as their maintained list of interested developers. From that, a sixty-day response period is granted that the city has to wait and receive any potential statements of interest. If no request to negotiate received, then the city may dispose of the land to any party after receiving its clearance from HCD. If a request to negotiate is received, however, then ninety-day negotiation period is then provided. The city is not required to conclude that period with a deal with any party if through good faith negotiations, no agreement is reached on price or lease terms. After the conclusion of the negotiation period, the city then submits a report of compliance to HCD again, and they have a thirty-day review period before they're required to declare as whether we are compliant or not. Once that process is completed, then the city may dispose of the land again with that HCD report of compliance. Some other key provisions of the Surplus Land Act. If the party requests to purchase or lease only a portion of the surplus land, the city is not required to entertain that offer. The city may at a discretion, but it's not required. The city may issue a notice of withdrawal if it wants to pull the property off of the surplus list. The city is not required to rezone or change its land use as part of those negotiations. If there's a violation of the Surplus Land Act, the city then would have to deposit thirty percent of its proceeds into Affordable Housing Fund. If there's a second violation in the future, then that would be fifty percent. And then if sold for housing purposes, affordability restrictions would be required to be placed on the deed, or on the deed restriction, I should say. So staff's recommendation for councils to adopt the resolution declaring a portion of the Gilroy Sports Park property as surplus, and then direct staff to begin the process of issuing the notice of availability in compliance with the Surplus Land Act. That completes your presentation, happy to address any questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, council, any questions of Bryce? Okay, public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have seven speaker cards for this.
Seven speaker cards for this, okay?
The first three speakers are Isabel Santos, followed by Raymondo Armandares, followed by Xavier Garcia.
Okay, I'm going to keep the two-minute, where are those people? Oh, okay. So you want to go through them all, see who's here?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, the following is Hazel or Hazelle Quintero.
She left.
Followed by Leanna Ribera.
You guys know all these people?
I have Marty Estrada.
Okay. All right, well, you might as well take three minutes if you're the only one.
Yes, give me one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Wait, wait.
Ma'am, let me make the change from two minutes to three minutes here.
Okay. And you're speaking on this item, which is eleven point one?
Yeah, just, just therefore, I, the monitor wasn't on the last time I spoke, so when you cut me off.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay.
So just a couple of things I want to bring up to your attention. In regards to this land parcel, the surplus, we should think about putting aside of that surplus land towards a youth center. There's a lot of youth center in Gilroy. We need a really good youth center. You know what's a good youth center, like an aquatic center? Is Morgan Hill. They have an aquatic center that's tied into senior center. They have multiple classrooms, places for youth, and families can workout, issues, and just a bunch of things you can do. Indoor soccer, so forth and so on. So we need to have a youth center in Gilroy. That's our hope, is to have a youth center. A lot of youth don't have a place to go. I know we have a so-called youth center, but it's not adequate. We need a really good youth center that's tied to an aquatic center. Also with that, if we can leverage that by putting aside of that land to put a temporary homeless site sanctioned by the city encampment, that we can get all the folks that need supportive services there, then we can do case management. Ten years ago, I worked in Gilroy. I housed a hundred families and individuals that were homeless on the street. I got the city count, I got San Jose's, I used, I leveraged San Clara County's Housing Authority vouchers. I got them. They wanted to give it all to San Jose. I got a hundred. I housed a hundred families here in Gilroy. We used case management, we did needs assessments, we got everybody on the right track, did all a lot of work, a lot of them stayed housed. We lost nobody except one because one died. So there's a way, if we can get these homeless folks off the street, put them in a place where we can start doing case management services, looking at their needs assessment, finding out what kind of needs they might have. Do a survey, finding out what they need in terms of their mental health, addiction, and those that just need a hand up and getting a job or getting stable and finding other solutions for housing. So if we put a part of that land towards that, it would be a great use. And in terms of the homeless here, you know what a great idea for y'all to do? Is thinking about a trash program that you pay the homeless to bring trash to designated spot, trash for cash. And what that works, that will help is that all over City of San Jose, Gilroy, you can have people that are homeless pick up trash, bring it to a location, and we pay them a little fee. That goes a long ways. I'm not talking about, there's another program here in Gilroy, I'm not talking about that. But if we get a bunch of homeless folks start picking up trash and bring it to a designated spot, then we can have beautified Gilroy. Things will be clean on the street, and we pay them five dollars a trash bag. We'll figure out a model to make sure that they get paid, but we do the service, we get the service done by these folks. Last thing I want to say, that let's partner together. Let's get together a bunch of orgs so we can work this out and figure out solutions for the homeless and our youth program, because there's a lot of kids that are getting arrested that we need to get off the street and get them out of jail and put them in places of programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any others?
Last speaker is Sally Armandares.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm going to say the same thing that Mr. Marty said right now, is that we do need a youth center. You know, we haven't had a real youth center for a while. When Don Gage was, was the mayor, he assured us of a youth center. He got the old PG&E building on Sixteenth, and it really worked good for the youth. You know, a lot of those kids have graduated, you know, gone off to college and made some positive changes in their life. So the youth center is needed. And, you know, we have these nine point one acres that, that's surplus land that belongs to Gilroy. Why would we want to sell it when property is getting so much more expensive in South County? Well, the whole county, when we can use it for services for the homeless and we can use it for services for the youth of Gilroy. If we had, you know, we can, the same way that the Fire Department is asking for modulators, we can do that to create either a youth center or to create, or to create a homeless shelter. You know, there you can have all the services that are needed. We can have, you know, the county, San Clara County has a bus, a medical bus that comes around. We could have it there if we have the homeless. You know, we can have showers for them, we can have potty, potties for them, everything that is needed, you know. And, and it would make them feel like they're actual human beings and they're not just being talked about like if they're, you know, like the trash that's out in the street because they're not. You know, they're human beings that, that need a home. And we all know that nobody, unless, you know, you have some really high-paying jobs, you're not going to be able to buy a house in Gilroy anymore. And that land is available right now. It may be sad for the city to sell that land and not use it for its own residents. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's it, concludes public comment?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so coming back to council. The land is not being sold, I'll just say that. This has nothing to do with selling the land. But, okay, so is there more discussion or a motion to adopt a resolution declaring a portion of the Gilroy Sports Park property, the nine point one acres, to be surplus land?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Bracco, and this is a roll call.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romanios?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. Okay, eleven point two, Gourmet Alley Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee Recommendations. Corinne, are you going to be giving this report?
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to present this evening the recommendations of the Downtown Gourmet Alley Ad-Hoc Committee. So a little bit of background, the Ad-Hoc Committee was formed on November first, 2021. It's when the City Council approved the formation of this committee, and council members Armandares, Marks, and Tovar volunteered to join the committee with Councilmember Tovar appointed by the committee as chair and Councilmember Marks as vice chair. And the committee began meeting monthly starting in January of 2022. And the discussions were really focused around identifying challenges and opportunities to spur revitalization downtown. And some of the work that the committee has accomplished over the last few months include comprehensive review of the city's downtown specific plan as well as the strategic plan. And they've compiled a list of the new businesses opening downtown as well and what stage of the process that they are currently in. They've reached out and researched and reviewed best practices from other cities in and around the Bay Area to address a variety of issues, including vacancies, noise, parking, security, lighting, beautification, outdoor dining, and assessment improvement districts. As part of the group's activities, as Councilmember Tovar has already mentioned, they attended the Silicon Valley Economic Development Alliance meeting and a tour of downtown Morgan Hill. And that was really a good opportunity for us to talk about redevelopment, successful redevelopment projects downtown. So as a result of the meetings that were held, the review of the city's policies, reaching out and to other cities to find out what best practices were, and in light of the new developments, and in light of the new businesses that are anticipated to open downtown, the committee has developed four recommendations to present to council this evening. And those are, one, to update the downtown specific plan, I mean strategic plan, to develop new ordinances to address vacancies and noise, to pursue opportunities for an assessment district, and to develop a downtown parking management plan. And then I'll get into each one. So the downtown strategic plan was completed in November of 2006. The strategic plan is really a visioning document that was intended to recommend economic development strategies that would attract viable and desirable businesses to the selected districts within the downtown specific plan area. And while many of the recommendations in the strategic plan remain viable, the sixteen years that have passed since the completion of that plan has seen many important changes to Gilroy, which include population growth. has seen many important changes to Gilroy, which include population growth, changing demographics, market conditions, and economic factors, especially post-COVID, that are not reflected. And so therefore, as a result, the committee recommends that, that we update the specific plan, the strategic plan, my goodness, the strategic plan to, in order to accommodate the important factors that are not covered now in determining future revenue-generating sustainable economic development for downtown. Secondly, vacancies and noise. Vacant buildings downtown are an eyesore and present a significant challenge in redevelopment and revitalization efforts. And further, as new developments occurs downtown and a nighttime economy begins to form, other considerations need to be made as well regarding noise. So as a result, the committee is recommending a new ordinance or policy to incentivize property owners to market and lease their vacant commercial buildings in order to stimulate development and bring new businesses downtown. This does include the possibility of, um, let's see, what does it say? Of financial penalties or incentives for property owners in exploring the options there for leasing their vacant and undeveloped buildings. Secondly, a noise ordinance is being proposed by the committee in order to buffer the surrounding neighborhoods from nuisance and to ensure compliance from the new businesses. And then an assessment district is really a financing tool that's used by a lot of vibrant downtowns to fund a lot of projects like facade and beautification projects, signage, street cleaning, graffiti removal, lighting, security, and other projects that are specific to the needs of the community. And so the recommendation for the formation of an assessment district is actually found in Gilroy's downtown specific plan and in its strategic plan, but it's never been implemented. But as a result of all of the renewed interest in downtown and the revitalization that's occurring, the committee is reviving the recommendation to pursue the formation of an assessment district as a priority. And then with more commercial and residential space being developed downtown, questions surrounding the number of availability of parking spots for employees, residents, customers, and visitors is raised. Therefore, the committee recommends pursuing the development of a parking management plan to help address and identify solutions to meet the parking needs downtown, which may include fees for parking and development of parking enforcement program. The next steps are, you know, the committee is going to continue to meet for the next several months. And as a result, they may consider bringing additional recommendations before council. Um, but tonight, the four recommendations that are being presented to council would not result in any policy changes without future council approval, and no budget amendment is being raised at this time. So council may either adopt all, some, all, some, or reject the committee's recommendations, but council approval of committee recommendations would enable staff to dedicate the time and resources needed to develop policy recommendations that we would bring back for full city council and identify costs, budget implications, and then incorporate these into future work plans. So as a result, staff recommends that the committee's recommendations be approved by council as presented. And this, oh. This concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Corinne. It looks like Councilmember Tovar is up first.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. And Corinne, thank you for such a beautiful report. And again, just a reminder to the council, again, these are our recommendations. We have not really, Corinne laid it out perfectly here, but we have not, as a, as a committee, have not dug into the sort of the meat and potatoes of each of these recommendations. It's really, you know, whatever the will of the board or the council is, and then we will go back as an ad hoc and discuss and direct our staff. But I, you know, again, when you look at each recommendation, you know, the strategic plan, obviously, as Corinne mentioned, you know, it gives us, gives us room to play with. You know, one of the things, when we were in Morgan Hill, one of the things that really caught my attention is, wow, maybe that's something that we could bring to downtown to generate a new, you know, new population, new, new folks downtown. It's maybe a pop-up park, you know, an adaptive playground, somewhere where kids can come out, parents can come out. And, you know, looking at this strategic plan, that's something that we can incorporate into that if it's, if it's the direction that the council wants to go. In regard, bless you. In regards to the vacant building ordinances that were talked about, you know, Corinne did lay it out. It could be penalties or it could be incentives for our businesses to open up, you know? We want to give them reasons to open up. So I think that's, you know, I'm glad you laid that out. And then regarding the assessment district, you're absolutely right. That's been in our strategic plan for over fifteen years. And it's something that the previous council, previous council incorporated that. It just never has come to us now for discussion, and it's long overdue. I think there's so many benefits to that, you know, having that discussion, see where that leads. So again, and then in regards to the parking management, that consists of many things, you know, like you said, maybe more development, uh, more, you know, monitoring, whatever it may be. Again, but we haven't dug into all of those yet. You know, we want to get everyone's feedback, and then if it's approved by the council, then we'll go back and have that discussion. So thank you, Corinne, and thank you, Jimmy, for this work that you did.
Okay, seeing no other council members on the board, I'd like to go to public comment. Do we have anyone who wants to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor. I had no speaker cards for this.
Okay, then a closing public comment. I think it might be simplest to take this in the order that they're in our packets, one, two, three, and four. That way we can motion to approve individually, if that's all right, just in case there's one that...
Sure.
Okay, so let's start with updating the downtown strategic plan. Is everybody good with that direction to staff? It looks like that is unanimous. The next one is developing new ordinances to address vacancies and noise. Also unanimous. Uh, the next is to pursue opportunities for an assessment district, which for those who maybe don't understand, anyone watching this later, it's like a homeowners association for downtown. Okay, that's also unanimous. And develop a downtown parking management plan. Also unanimous. Okay, so does that cover everything, Jimmy? Is there anything else you would like to address or get clarification on? Okay, thank you, Corinne.
Mayor, can I just one last comment? Again, I would be remiss, and I want to thank also Councilmember Armandares and Councilmember Marks for all the work that you guys put into this. I know we've had many discussions. Carol's yelled at me more than anybody. And, but no, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, we're all trying to get to a common goal here, you know?
Yeah.
A uniform sort of vision of our downtown and Gourmet Alley, so I want to thank you both for...
Well, I want to thank the whole committee, so all, all of you. Thank you for your work. Let's keep it moving, keep it going. You know, that's great to have that kind of direction so that staff knows what the entire council is behind, and let's see where it goes from here. Okay, next item is eleven point three, which is approval of the Gilroy Firefighters Local 2805 MOU and related salary schedules for July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2026. And LeAnn is going to give a staff report if we even really need a staff report, but... One for all of... Oh, okay, that's fine. Yeah. Maybe a thing to do. My screen went blank here, Ty. Here on the...
Okay. Good evening, council. LeAnn McPhillips from Human Resources tonight. Um, we have MOUs and salary resolutions on the council's agenda for approval. Rather than put you through four staff reports, I combined it into one staff report and one PowerPoint presentation for the next four items that are on the agenda. So I'm going to cover all four items, and then you're going to need to go back and do any actions that you want to take on each one of them individually. That way there, I'm not repeating the same information over and over. Does that make sense? Very good. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is approving an MOU and related salary resolution for the Gilroy Firefighters IAAF Local 2805. This labor contract covers thirty-eight non-management fire employees in the ranks of fire captain, fire engineer, and firefighter licensed paramedics. The term of the agreement that we've reached is a four-year term from seven one twenty-two to six thirty of twenty-six. We have agreed to add retention steps to the MOU in the form of step F, G, H, and I, based on years of service, having a good performance evaluation, and the employee having been one year at the prior step. And then the fire engineer salary range is being increased by approximately two point five percent to avoid compaction with, between the firefighter position and the fire engineer position. There was more room, and the market indicated that it was probably a little bit low, so we've agreed to move that up about two and a half percent. And then we are increasing the number of potential support paramedics from nine to twelve. And then there are some other smaller changes to the annual physical exam process to include cancer screening, expanding our residency requirement from ninety to one hundred and eighty minutes, and continuing our cost share on our health premium increase. In fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four, there'll be a five percent increase to the city's contribution, but in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, we're going to increase the city contribution to the retiree medical trust by seventy-five dollars per month in lieu of the medical contribution increase. And then we had some other general cleanup language for clarity and compliance. And so this tentative agreement is based upon the negotiations that have taken place over the last several months. As you know, we have met in close session. You've provided direction to the city's negotiating team relative to the negotiations, and we proceeded forward to negotiate within that direction provided by council. And this is the tentative agreement that has been reached, and we're here for council's consideration and approval this evening. The fiscal impact over a four-year period is approximately eight hundred and twenty-five thousand or approximately two thousand, two hundred and six thousand two fifty annual average, and it's one hundred percent charged to the general fund. And I'll stop there. Any questions before I move on to the next labor group? Okay, moving on, AFSMI Local 101. Uh, Gilroy Chapter, they have a general unit and a supervisory unit. Uh, this is approximately one hundred miscellaneous, non-exempt employees in various positions ranging from dispatcher to planners to engineers to maintenance workers to recreation coordinators, accounting assistants, inspectors. Uh, so it's a wide-ranging group of employees. And again, we've been meeting in close session. Council provided direction to the negotiating team, um, and we've reached a tentative agreement with this group, consistent with the direction provided by council. So the terms of the agreement are also a four-year term, seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty-six. Also the addition of retention steps, but in this case, three instead of four. Uh, F, G, and H, five percent step increase based on five, ten, fifteen years of service, good performance evaluation, completion of the years of service as noted, and one year at the preceding step. In addition, there will be cost of living increases in the amount of three, 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 and one in each of the fiscal years that cover this MOU. Um, and the city contribution to medical and dental insurance is frozen at the one one twenty-two amounts. And so in this case, this labor group opted to freeze their medical contribution and move that dollars to another place in the contract. And then we had some other general cleanup language for clarity and compliance. And then this group asked for a request. They want the council to give some future consideration to adding two additional city-observed holidays, Cesar Chavez Day and Juneteenth. We explained that this is a policy decision of the council to determine if holidays are to be observed by the City of Gilroy and city services are to be closed to the public. That is a council decision. Um, and so that, that request has come through to have the council give that consideration at some point in the future. So we agreed to bring that to the council's attention. In the case of this group, um, over the four-year period, the fiscal impact is one point five million. So the annual average is three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight oh two. Again, this is a group of approximately a hundred employees. Fifty-six percent of the cost goes to the general fund, and about forty-four percent goes to other funds. Any questions before I continue to the next group? Okay, moving on. Uh, so we also have some unrepresented confidential employees, and they're confidential due to the nature of their work in supporting my job in Human Resources for the bargaining process and labor relations. There's only three employees, HR technician, management assistant, and accounting technician for payroll. These are full-time confidential, non-exempt, unrepresented employees, and I'll ask you to repeat that later. So this group, this small group tends to get salary and benefit increases like AFSMI. Uh, there's no MOU, but rather a resolution that sets forth the terms of what these employees receive. Um, so tracking AFSMI, the additional retention steps, same, cost of living increases, the same. Will also freeze the medical and dental contribution. The fiscal impact for these three employees is forty-two thousand one eighty-two over four years, so about ten thousand five forty-six per year, eighty-two percent to the general fund, eighteen percent to other funds. Any questions on this one? Okay, moving on to the last one. Uh, we have unrepresented hourly, part-time, temporary, seasonal employees. There's approximately twenty of these folks. Rec leaders, maintenance assistant, office assistant, accounting assistant, interns, communication assistant, water conservation officers. These are part-time, hourly employees that we have here at the city. Um, they don't have an MOU, so we do a resolution, and we're proposing that we track the cost of living increases over the four-year period, same as what the AFSMI group is receiving. The fiscal impact over the four years is ninety thousand eight hundred dollars, about twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars per year, forty-four percent general fund, and fifty-six percent to other funds. Any questions on that one?
How many employees are in this category?
Twenty. Okay, and then the last item before you this evening is a one-time retention incentive payment. Uh, this applies to all full-time City of Gilroy employees, and it's pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds that you've heard about before, and it's a retention incentive. Um, and this is a one, it would be a one-time payment. It's an allowable use in ARPA funds. Um, as you probably have heard from the past, there was about one point nine trillion in funding from ARPA. Uh, three hundred and fifty billion went to governments, and ten point nine billion dollars came over to the City of Gilroy. Um, and one of the allowable options is a retention incentive to make sure you're retaining public employees that are delivering important services to the community. And so we've talked about this extensively as we've gone through these negotiations that retaining employees is a top priority, and our city's human resources are a very important top priority. I think they're the number one asset of the City of Gilroy. Uh, we're a service organization. We're here to provide services to the community, and we have some awesome employees that do it really, really well. The cost to hire and train is very expensive, and then we have lost productivity when we lose employees. And so the focus on retention became very important as we've proceeded forward these last few months. Uh, so what has been discussed is a one-time payment of three thousand dollars to each full-time employee. Um, we would capture it in a one-time window of time in July one twenty-two to, for the month of July of twenty-two. Many other agencies have done similar one-time payments. Um, the payment is not persable, so it's not reportable to CalPERS, but it is taxable income to the employee. The fiscal impact of this one-time payment for approximately two hundred and thirty-five full-time employees is seven hundred and five thousand dollars, and this is about six point five percent of the ARPA funds that Gilroy received. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on any of these items. And like I said at the beginning, each staff report has a list of recommended actions, and you can take these actions individually, or they can be grouped based on reports. So if you want to group all the IAAF Local twenty-eight oh five recommended actions in one motion, you can do that. Uh, otherwise, you're going to have a lot of motions.
Yeah, well, let me first go to public comment.
I receive no public comments on this, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. I'd like to make a motion, so on eleven point three, I'd like to start this off by making a motion for that we adopt the resolutions A, B, and C all together.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I, I made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, for A, B, and C together. Let's see how that goes with everybody.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LeRue Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
Okay, would someone else like to make a similar motion now for eleven-point-four? And that's, oh, wait. Let me ask for a public comment first. Public comment on eleven-point-four?
I receive no public comments.
Okay, closing public comment.
I will, so moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember Tovar for the one, two, three, four.
Yes, four.
Resolutions. Is that okay?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Armendaris.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Ramunios.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that is also unanimous. So eleven-point-five, public comment.
I receive no speaker cards on this, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment. So this one has one, two, three. If anybody wants to...
I'll make, I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Marks to adopt the resolutions A, B, and C under eleven-point-five.
Councilmember Armendaris.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Ramunios.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to eleven-point-six. Do we have any public comments?
I receive no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment. Do I have a motion to to adopt a resolution approving the one-time retention incentive payment of three thousand dollars for all full-time city employees?
I'll make that motion. Oh, second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Armendaris, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, and it's a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Ramunios.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Wow.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
This means a lot to our employees.
It means a lot to us, too.
Can I make a comment? Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
To Leanne, Jimmy, and all those involved, thank you for the work that you guys did. You know, and, you know, I'm glad that you identified retention as being priority, because as you guys know, for years, I and others have been saying, we need to retain our own. And I'm glad that it's a priority for the city, and I think it goes a long way to show our employees that we value them. So I want to thank you guys for all the work you guys have done. Obviously, you know, our chiefs as well for having some great employees, so thank you.
Okay. Twelve-point-one, city administrators' report. This is on the animal removal contracts.
Yes, we'll go first with Chief Armendaris for the city's animal removal.
Chief Armendaris.
Thank you.
I appreciate the recognition, Jimmy.
Oh, my goodness.
We just spent so much money that, on labor agreements.
Chief Espinoza.
Chief Espinoza on a council-initiated item concerning the city's animal removal contracts.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you know, I wish I could tell you we had one stop shop for animal control, but the reality is that we rely on several organizations to carry out our animal control duties. And I'll go through the organizations and what they do for the city. We do have an MOU, and this is the only MOU that we have, with South County Animal Shelter. And we've been in, we've been with them since twenty-eighteen formally. And they house found domesticated animals such as dogs, cattle, cats, birds, et cetera. And they provide veterinary services for sick or injured animals during business hours. And so we contract with other vets for off-business hours, and we get our VIPs to help us transport them. They will hold dogs for criminal investigations as well for rabies quarantine and all the dog bite investigations. Again, we've been with them since January twenty-fifth of twenty-eighteen. And prior to that, we used them as parade when we took animals up there. San Jose Tallo, they retrieve animal carcasses, and the shelter does not do that. So they go to the actual site. We also have a tallo bin, which, you know, it's a fifty-five-gallon drum that our animal control could pick up cats and dogs or other small animals, and they'll transport them when someone is working, when the animal control officer is working. They typically could retrieve carcasses for public areas, roadways, typically animals that are too large to be placed in our tallo bin. And that includes adult bear and adult deer and livestock. I did not say bear, it was deer. There isn't a sit contract with San Jose Tallo, but they charge us per pickup, and we've used their services for over twenty years. Now, Santa Clara County Vector Control, we have no formal contract with them, but we use them as a resource for vector-related problems such as rotund scugs, opossums, and other animals cohabitating with humans. They have limited field services, and typically they avoid field collection of animals. So Tallo has to respond as well. California Fish and Game, no contract with Fish and Game, but they provide assistance with wildlife that come into residential areas. So as we encroach their natural habitat, this is the issue we have to deal with, is wildlife like bobcats and mountain lions and coyotes, foxes. Wildlife Educational Rehab Center mainly deals with injured indigenous wild birds, not owned by citizens. They do not provide field services, and we have to transport to their facility in Morgan Hill. Wildlife of Silicon Valley, no contract with them, but they rehabilitate most of the wildlife after being injured or sick. No field services, and we transport to their facility in San Jose. Santa Clara County Public Health Lab, no contract, but they do the testing of deceased animals to check for rabies, and no field services as well. And so we have a whole process of how we deal with injured animals, injured or sick animals. I could stop there or let you know exactly how we deal with injured animals?
Okay. I'm good. Yeah.
Right, so San Jose Tallo is the company that does the pickup. Typically, they respond within twenty-four hours. And again, if we have an animal control officer, you know, that's a little bit faster where they'll pick up the injured, I mean, the dead cat or our dog and take it to the bin. We do, we did hire our last animal control officer as a police officer, and so we had a little gap in services there. But our multi-services officers are also trained in animal control, and when they're off as a last resort, our officers will handle animal control as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Armendaris, you have a question?
Yeah. Chief, our, thank you for compiling all this information. I'm sure it wasn't fun. Is San Jose Tallo the only private organization?
That pick?
That we contract with? Or that we use? Because it looks like the rest are either state, county, or...
Yeah, there's, um... Wildlife of Silicon Valley, I think they're...
Like a nonprofit?
Yeah, they're private as well. And I know there's some after-hours emergency vets that we deal with them as well, but...
Work is also nonprofit, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, that's all for my question.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? Okay. Anyone?
Madam Mayor, I did receive one speaker comment.
We have a comment, okay? Would you like to speak? Yeah, you have three minutes.
As far as the animals, the wildlife and domestic, I've learned a lot about how to get them help because I've done it myself. I've transported the deceased animals, the deer. I know about Silicon Valley for the deer. I call them the rehab. I've talked to Maria from the city that helps with the animals. Her and I just talked just the other day. We both agreed, and also the animal shelter, that when there's not enough bodies for the police department, the animal control, that it would be best if animal control from San Martin could step up because a lot of times they're short staff. The city of Gilroy, I do know that. And they did agree, we need to put the animals first and start utilizing the San Martin Animal Shelter. They also do pick up deceased cats because I've called them many times, and they also take the cats besides tallo, dogs and cats and other animals. Because I know this stuff because I'm firsthand on this. I had to learn it the hard way. So Silicon Valley of Santa Clara is very helpful. They also have a rehab in Morgan Hill for the birds. I just took a bird about a week ago, two different ones, to the rehab. And also for the bigger animals, for the does in San Jose, and also I have, and Hollister as well. I have a lot of resources even for the bunnies. I've transported thirty of them last year to Reno, Nevada. I find solutions, usually by myself. That's how I get things done, by talking to people, helping people, working together. And that's how I get, I've gotten a lot. I've cleaned off two ranches in the last year and a half. I meant where people left tons of animals, dogs, cats, you name them. Got them all homes. And I do a lot of TNR, which is trap, new to release, and find the babies. If I get them young enough, find them homes. I've done everything. So pretty much, I'm here to help. And I've reached out to the city of Gilroy regarding animal control. I'm there to help them as well and educate if they need it. And Marie and I are going to work on how to get a deer out of the fence. I'm supposed to call her and set up a time. I'm going to have someone else come out from San Jose and train us. And I'm also looking forward to meeting the new hire because I've just held, he's going to get, someone just is in training. So I'm looking forward to meeting him as well. But my concern is putting down a deer ASAP, not waiting four hours because we're in San Jose. Y'all are in San Jose. Can we please just use our animal shelter, local animal shelter, to help with those crises? You know, when they're too booked up, we need to work together. Need to work together. That's what I'm trying to say, for the animal's sake. Nothing else. I'm always putting the animal first. So that's why I'm here to speak. And it's all volunteer. I don't get paid anything. Out of my pocket, I've fed horses, ducks, every animal you can think of.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for all that you do.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to finish it up? Your report, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing on here and then a couple of small pieces. I'll do the small pieces first. Did want to let everybody know that we do have a Seventh and Eagleberry parking lot groundbreaking ceremony on next week, on the fourteenth.
Yes.
At four o'clock, and that'll be right before downtown live music. So please come by. You can see some renderings. You can ask some questions. You can see where all the new things are going to be. But it's really our kind of signature kickoff capital improvement project for downtown, and we'd love to have some good buzz around there. So we'll look forward to that. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Silicon Valley Economic Development Alliance that tour of downtown Morgan Hill that I went with our economic development analyst, Corinne Decker, and Councilmember Tovar, as part of the ad hoc committee. We actually spent the afternoon in downtown, which for me is a little bit of a homecoming because I was involved with the redevelopment agency bond issuance of a hundred-and-ten million dollars about fifteen years ago. Well, Gilroy didn't have a hundred-and-ten million-dollar bond issuance, so we didn't, we don't have that to rely on. But there were a lot of things that we did see from a different perspective that kind of opened our, especially my eyes because I looked at, you know, some things on what they're doing. But one thing I was really impressed with Morgan Hill was the utilization of vacant land. If they had a spot of land that wasn't being utilized, they put a park in it, even if it was a pop-up park. They would negotiate with private owners to say, let us use your land for a year. We'll pay you, you know, X amount of dollars, and we're going to put a park there. And it was strategically placed at places next to restaurants and, I'll say breweries, in case parents want to hang out at the brewery while the kids are at the park, things like that. So that was very creative, and it also enabled different generations, different ages, to enjoy activities in downtown because not everybody, you know, likes beer or not everybody wants to go out to eat. But, you know, kids like to play and things like that. So I thought that was really creative and really impressive. And then the second part, I would say, is that their utilization of the vacant properties and identifying of what I would call like inertia projects. Like, it's great to dream big, okay? It would be nice to have a downtown that looks like Campbell or Los Gatos. And you know what? We can get there. But it starts kind of, you know, momentumally. It starts incrementally, that's the word I'm looking for. So a lot of the stuff that they weren't able to do with the bond issuance and some other activities, they were able to start with a focus. And I think that's one thing that's been very helpful for us in our, you know, our economic development activities that we have focused on Gourmet Alley, you know, things like that. So those were kind of some things that we saw in speaking with Morgan Hill staff and some other cities that I think really showed us that, yeah, it's nice to dream big, and it would be nice to have a hundred million dollars, but we don't, we don't have that. And so every little bit helps. And as you can see, things like a parking lot or Gourmet Alley grant are those kind of inertia projects that will stimulate other things to happen. So I think keeping our focus and keeping our eyes on doing the best we can with what we have and helping here, there, and wherever we can was my big takeaway from that, that afternoon. It was a good time, and I'm glad we were able to do that. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, city attorneys' reports?
I have no report, but we have a lot of closed sessions if you would like.
Go ahead.
Jimmy, are we doing the labor one? We mentioned that we might not do that.